With no further ado, I would like to ask our friends from West Wyndham to open up with a song from Woody Guthrie. And I believe everybody has lyrics. So please join, please stand up and join in as you're able to.
This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to the New York island. From Redwood Forest to the Roastie waters. This land was made for you and me. When the sun was warming, that was the highway. I saw a pony, that endless highway. I saw the old me, that golden valley. This land was made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to the New York island. From Redwood Forest to the Roastie waters. This land was made for you and me. I've grown and ready to go, and bought my good shares. To the sparkling tranquil, the burning desert. And all around me, a voice of sound. This land was made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to the New York island. From Redwood Forest to the Roastie waters. This land was made for you and me. When the sun came shining, and I was strolling. And the wind was waving, and the dust started rolling. And the fog was lifting, a voice each chanting. This land was made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to the New York island. From Redwood Forest to the Roastie waters. This land was made for you and me.
Thank you, neighbors. Another round of applause for the musicians. Okay, so my name is Michael McLean, and I am the Town Manager for the Town meeting. And I'll read the instructions to the body before I call the meeting to order. Robert's Rules of Orders are the basic rules of order for this meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedence. Public body cannot change Vermont state law, but it can change Robert's Rules with a two-thirds vote, if you desire. An article must be moved and seconded by the body and restated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debate on the article may begin. After the moderator restates the motion, the person who made the motion has the right to speak first in the debate. Articles may only have one amendment at a time associated with them, and amendments to an article likewise may have only one amendment at a time associated with them. After you've spoken once on a particular article, you will not be recognized a second time during discussion on that article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given an opportunity to do so. Robert's Rules only allows a given speaker to speak twice on a given motion and limits the duration of speeches to 10 minutes, although unless there's any objection, I would reduce that to five minutes per speaker. Division of the House can be requested by one voter before or after a voice vote. Vermont state law provides for a paper ballot vote under request of seven voters, unless the towns have made other arrangements, again before or after a voice vote or after a division of the House. This means that the moderator could ask for a voice vote and declare the motion passed. Someone could immediately request a division of the House. Moderator then must require a vote by show of hands or rising, and moderator would declare the motion passed. Someone could immediately request a paper ballot, and moderator then have to honor this request if the number of people asked to take paper ballot meets minimum requirements. Debate may be cut off by a motion to move the previous question and a two-thirds vote to do so. All motions, remarks, and discussions must be addressed by the moderator. I'll do my best to recognize you in the order that you raised your hands. You must be recognized to speak, even to move the previous question. After being recognized, please stand up, wait for a microphone, give your name, and speak in a loud voice, so that your comments may be heard everywhere. There are microphones at the front of the room. Is it just one?
Just one.
Just one. And we have a portable microphone that Bill Don will bring to you if you're not able to make it to the front. Your speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. You will not be allowed to engage in personal attacks on a member of the body or their motives. Vermont state law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. This means you cannot take binding action under the Article of the Business, and you can't amend or warn articles such they would deal with business that hasn't been warned. Reconsideration of an article is allowed by Vermont state law until the point is reached where the body has begun working on another article. This means if you voted down an article, a motion can be made to reopen consideration of this article by a person on the prevailing side, and I will need to ask how you voted. However, once the article is on the floor, no more action can be taken regarding the previous article at this meeting. My role as moderator is to help you accomplish the business you intend to do. Please raise your hand and ask a question if you don't understand what is happening, or if you think what is happening is wrong for some reason, or if you want to do something, but you don't know how to proceed. Please tell me if you feel unadmitted improperly. You have the right to challenge the moderator's rulings. Only registered voters of the town may vote at this meeting. At this time, I ask that those who are not registered voters in the town go ahead and raise their hands. Thank you. Thank you for coming. You may not vote unless there's a suspension of the rules, you may not speak on articles. Okay, so with that, I call the meeting to order. It is 10:17 by my watch. And we'll start with Article One. And let me just give you some background on Article One before we get into it. Last year at a town meeting, the town voted to elect town officials, town officers rather, by Australian ballot, which is what we have going on in the back. We have the election of officers. So this Article One is actually a moot point. So upon advice from Town Council, the advice was to pass over this article. So that's the recommendation. So anyway, Article One, to elect a town moderator for the year ensuing. I need a motion to bring the article to the floor.
I would make a motion to have it strike the order.
So we have to pass over the article. So that's what you mean to say?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to pass over the article as written. I need a second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Carolyn. Okay, so Article One, the motion is to pass over Article One. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article One, pass over. So before we get into business, we have somebody from the collaborative who's approached being asked to have the floor for just a few minutes. She has a limited amount of time this morning, so if there's no objection from the body, I would like to ask Alice Abraham to speak. Thank you.
So I'm Alice Abraham from the collaborative. We're in London, Derek. We're a nonprofit. We are working on prevention of substance misuse in communities. Just, we want to thank you for your ongoing support and the appropriation, once again, of $350 to our work. Very quickly, a few highlights are that we were in the Vermont license and accredited after-school program of our blood group, but it is separate. It's with the collaborative. And summer camp, which supports 75 working families. We also provide expertise in workshops and community help in 50 towns through southern Vermont, and Penn schools, including homeschool. So there's a lot more, but if you want to get in touch with the collaborative in any way and needs support or information or not a workshop, get in touch. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Alice. So before we get going on Article Two, there's one thing I also just would like to say. We are voting on officers by Australian ballot, so talk to Ellen McDuffie or the assistants who are helping her with the election, get your ballot and vote. The polls will be open until 7:00 p.m. But I'd also like to take this time, and I hope I'm not out of order here, to thank Ellen for her years of service as town clerk. And so, round of applause for Ellen.
Serving out for the years as a town clerk and also as an assistant clerk. And don't worry, I'm not going too far. Hopefully, I'll still be able to see all of you down there.
Thank you. And also, this also marks the end of Kathy Scott's tenure as town treasurer. And I didn't see Kathy. Oh, hi Kathy. Go Eagles! So I'm mad for the town. Thank you for your service for the town. Round of applause for Kathy. Okay, get back to business. Article Two. Shall the voters accept the town report prepared by the auditors? Looking for a motion.
I may, I will.
Allison, move the motion.
I'll second.
And it's been seconded by Carolyn. Shall the voters accept the town report prepared by the auditors? Allison, you want to speak to this?
I think it's a great report, and we should all vote to accept it.
All right. Any other discussion on Article Two? Yes?
I would vote to reject it as a lot of requests for extra unnecessary spending, such as money in advance for town building, dream garage, and all those type of extra spendings that I don't believe are necessary at this time or austerity should be used in the governance of the municipality.
Okay, any other discussion on Article Two? Okay, seeing no other discussion, bring the article to a vote. Shall the voters accept the town report prepared by the auditors? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article Two passes as written. All right, there's been a request to move into the school district portion of the meeting. So there's no objection to that. We will move to the school, which on your town report, it starts on page eight. So at this point, I would ask for a change of the officers on the dais to be the school board.
Yeah, it's just one.
Okay. Is all school board members here? Howie, Howie's here. So if Howie and Abby would come up to the stage, and then we'll move into the school board portion of the meeting. Is the third school board member coming? Do we know?
My mistake, he is, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so then we'll keep going with the town, with the town business until... Okay, Article Three. Shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to collect current taxes? Looking for a motion from the floor. Alan McLean moves it. Kathy Scott, second. Okay. Shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to collect current taxes? Alan, do you have any discussion? Any discussion on Article Three? Okay. Seeing no discussion on Article Three. Article Three, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to collect current taxes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article Three passes. Article Four. Shall the voters set the due date for property taxes as postmarked on or before October 31st, 2025? Looking for a motion from the floor. Kathy. So Kathy moves the article.
Second.
Carolyn, seconds. Article Four, shall the voters set the due date for property taxes as postmarked on or before October 31st, 2025? Kathy, any discussion? Any discussion on Article Four? Okay, seeing no discussion on Article Four. Shall the voters set, we'll move that to a vote. Shall the voters set the due date for property taxes as postmarked on or before October 31st, 2025? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article Four passes as written. Article Five. Shall the voters advise the select board to offer a standard individual health insurance plan for the town clerk position in order to attract and hold a qualified person in that position? Looking for a motion from the floor.
So moved.
Carolyn moves the article. And, I'm sorry.
Alice Dietrich.
Alice Dietrich, seconded. Okay. Article Five. Shall the voters advise the select board to offer a standard individual health insurance plan for the town clerk position in order to attract and hold a qualified person in that position? Any discussion? Carolyn? Yes, Russ.
Is there a estimate as to what the cost might be to increase the budget?
Hey.
The total cost is approximately $15,000 and change. The way we figured it out, basically, the two positions would be offered for town clerk and town treasurer would be roughly around $30,000.
Could you say, did you say 15?
Approximately $15,000 and change, I guess.
Is that for one position or just for...
Per. Per position. It's sort of, the short story long is that it really depends on the plan that they were to choose were offering, or the ideas to offer insurance for that specific individual. There are some savings, for instance, if they chose to, depending on the type of plan. If they chose, for instance, to get a family plan, we might see a little different surprise because they would be covering that portion that would be the family thing. So you can see a difference in price that would necessarily be $15,000. That's the sort of max rate.
Yes, Phil?
Yeah, well, is this already in this year's budget? Proposed budget?
It is currently not in the proposed budget. I did some rough calculations in regards to the tax rate. It brings the tax rate approximately one and a half cents if we have insurance for both of those positions. And the total is somewhere around $30,000.
Is there a financial limit? I mean, say, I presume this year this is going to continue on? I mean, if the thing, you know, is there a limit that the town is willing to put? Or do we just put the bill regardless, you know, regardless of what the cost is here?
So that would be effectively up to the select board. In fact, you'll notice that this is an advisory position, or advisory vote. We chose to, instead of putting it in there as part of the budget, we chose to use an advisory vote from the town to advise what the town prefers to do. I suspect that the select board, depending on who's on the board, would work hard to make sure that the costs didn't reach uncontrollable limits. That being said, there is some debate regarding the amount of hours that the town clerk and the treasurer do post in the office. Currently, they are part-time positions, and as such, would not need to offer insurance. However, if they are working a sufficient number of hours and it can be categorized as a full-time position, then they would be obligated to be providing insurance. So that's something that we might end up facing in the future anyways.
Well, I think that applies to federal employment standards, you know, on what, when a company has part-time employees, hourly employees, and salary. You know, everything applies to companies fifth-year greater. I don't know that it necessarily applies to municipality, you know. We offer basically, you know, a contract. You do the work, this is how much money you get, whether we choose to throw that in or not. I don't think we are required to classify them as full-time or part-time. They just, they sign up to do the jobs for however many hours it takes. And I don't think that's controlled by any employment regulations, federal or state. My only other thing is, as y'all know, I did some research, compared our rates to...
Here, you can pick this up.
Well, I did do some research into what other municipalities were providing. I've got a plot that I made. In my opinion is, we're really in the middle of the pack as far as, you know, we're not way under and we're not way over. There's, you know, I looked at all the towns that were less than 1,000 people. I've got a plot on it, if anybody wants to look at it.
Put the mic closer to your mouth.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, I feel like at this point, you know, I'm not sure, you know, that I would prefer to wait and see if we find somebody that fills these positions and we're really, really happy with the way they do the job, that this may be something that can be offered a little later on. You know, it's go through probationary period first with the employee. And not offered at this point.
Any other discussion? I saw Kate's hand first, so I'll call Kate.
The possibility for us to supply health insurance I see as an incentive to keep someone. So I see that as a benefit of something to extend in good faith of that position. Whether or not we legally have to, I think it has, to me, I agree this more as do we as a town on supporting that position, which I personally think we should. But whether or not we legally have to is a different question, if that makes sense.
Okay, Carolyn, I'm sitting here.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Who can't hear me? I think it makes sense to authorize the select board to take a look at this. I'm looking around the room, and I see many of you, like I, who are on Medicare, which is the best healthcare option I've ever had in my whole life. And I think if we want to encourage younger people to participate in these positions in town, which is a good thing because they might be around for a while, that we just authorize the school board to take, or the select board to take a look at this and see if it's something that we want to do. So as Michael says, it is an advisory motion, and I think we should vote for it. Thanks.
I saw Cindy's hand.
I just have a question. I just have a couple of questions. Is this $15,000 per employee the total cost of the insurance plan? Or will the employee be contributing a portion? And are these employees working for the town considered working for the state? And this would be a state insurance offering? Or a private company offering?
We're still, that's yet to be determined. And this is an advisory vote.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Here, we got a...
Turn that one off.
This was an advisory vote, so we have yet to determine exactly, you know, which plan would be the best one to choose. We have to look into that more. So I can tell you this, this is a sidebar. I've talked to a number of potential candidates, and it's a big deal for people who are considering taking the job, especially if they're of a family, aged with a family at home, and they have alternatives. So I would encourage people who vote for it.
Okay, I see Russ's hand in the hall.
After my time on the school board, $30,000 a year was a premium for a family. And we recently went up to $38,000 a year through Blue Cross Blue Shield that the school system has. So I think the $15,000 is an unreasonably low estimate as to what the cost might actually be. And I think if you talk to teachers and other people, you'll find out that most families get the best plan they can get, and they're above $38,000 a year.
Just as a point of clarity, we're not suggesting that we would be funding the family plan. We're suggesting that we will be looking at funding the individual plan. So that would be for one nurse. If they choose to do, or chose to do, a family plan, that would be something that they would have to figure out how to pay for the expenses.
Okay, Bee?
Hi, I'm Bee Alia Sam, and I am running for the town clerk position. I recently left my full-time role, which covered my family's benefits. And in order to continue my healthcare plan under that previous employer through COBRA, it costs $2,200 a month. That would cost about $26 and change annually, which is more than the entire salary of the town clerk position. So for me and my family personally, it would not be financially viable for me to continue to pursue the role without the affordability of insurance being provided for me individually. I realize it's a huge extra amount that's not currently provided, but in terms of, you know, the job market and what's capable for me and any other member of people, medical insurance is a requirement. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Kathy, let's see your hand.
This year, we're currently paying well over $1,800 for the older person, for someone who has a two-person, husband and wife. It would be slightly cheaper if it was parent-child, but it's $1,800 a month. So the $15,000 is a good number for one person. And again, state of Vermont requires that a person is, get benefits if they work more than 24 hours a week. And I think you can safely, if you look at Bee and at Ellen, and you can say, we may only say we work for 24 hours, probably work for more than 24. And town clerk position is a full-time job. And quite frankly, once you're done with, fully with the transition, the treasurer is a full-time job. And this is just part of the package.
Howie?
Yeah, I just want to say that in our society right now, whether you like it or not, if you want a full-time person, you want a person that's going to stick around if you want a full-time person, you want a person that's going to stick around in the job, week to week, show up every day, offering health insurance is the way that you do it. Because anybody working a job that has no health insurance is always going to be looking for a job with health insurance, because we all need to be. So I think it's really good move to make health insurance on this job, because we want a treasurer and we want a, uh, clerk that's going to be there for a while. It's not the kind of job you want to turn over every few months, because somebody got something better down the road.
Hi, Crystal, you recognize?
Uh, I just want to say that I'm really glad that Bee decided to run for this position. She's done a great job with the website. I think she's going to be amazing town clerk. This is just an investigation into the health insurance. There's really no problem with investigating it and I would like to call the question.
Okay, there's a motion to call a question. We have to vote on that. It requires a two-thirds majority vote. That ends discussion on the article, so we're going to vote on calling the question. I need a second for that motion though. Kathy, second it. Okay, so we're voting on calling the question, which ends discussion on this article. Okay, not voting on the article itself. All of those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion on this article, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, so that moves us to the article itself. Article five, shall the voters advise the select board to offer a standard individual health insurance plan for the town clerk position in order to attract and hold a qualified person in that position? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, article five passes as written. Moving on, article six. Shall the voters advise the select board to offer a standard individual health insurance plan for the town treasurer position in order to attract and hold a qualified person in that position?
So moved.
Carolyn moves the article. I'm sorry. Howie seconds. Okay, article six, shall the voters advise the select board to offer a standard individual health insurance plan for the town treasurer position in order to attract and hold a qualified person in that position? Any discussion, Carolyn?
Uh, Mr. Valeri, I would say that I would support this for the, all the same reasons that I said earlier. And, uh, I think it's a good way to retain, uh, good workers and especially younger folks who don't benefit from Medicare.
Okay, any other discussions on article six?
I just have a question. So, how do you, yeah. If, if we vote for this, how does this fit into the budget for 2025?
We will have to amend the budget. If we vote both of them in the affirmative, the general fund budget will be, if I may ask, straight four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand to eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, which means you're twenty-six thousand to eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars as we raise the taxes.
Okay, was that thirty thousand or thirty-two thousand?
It's thirty-two thousand dollars for the combined.
Oh, that's okay. For thirty-three thousand would be what we're adding?
Thirty-two.
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 Okay, thank you.
All right, Maureen?
So you originally said that it was an advisory question. Um, so you would take that advice and look into it? Or does, if we vote yes, does it become automatically? Because the wording says to offer a standard.
So if the articles are voted in the affirmative, it gives the select board the ability to research and implement the plan. If we do that, we are going to need some sort of funds to fund it. So that I would recommend that we would amend the general fund budget. Uh, the alternative would be that we would overspend our budget and we could technically utilize surplus, but I would avoid doing that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on article six? Okay, seeing no other discussion on article six, bring that to a vote. Article six, shall the voters advise the select board to offer a standard individual health insurance plan for the town treasurer position in order to attract and hold a qualified person in that position? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, article six passes as written. So at this point, um, I'll, I'll ask the body, do we want to move into the school, school portion of the meeting? Or do we want to go into the budget for the, for the town? What's the general feeling from the body? Any?
Let's do the school.
Okay. All right, so if there's no objection, we'll move into the school portion and I would ask the school board to come up to the, to the stage. And the, uh, the school meeting morning starts on page eight of your annual report. Okay, uh, for those of you who do not know, the school board, I'd like to introduce you to Howie Iris, Avielle Pelman and Daniel Roth. So we'll begin the school board, school district annual meeting. Start with article one, to elect a moderator for a term of one year. Looking for a motion from the floor. Yes, Carolyn?
I would nominate Michael McLean.
Okay, thank you. There's a nomination for Michael McLean. It's been seconded, thank you. Uh, any other nominations for moderator? Okay, see no other nominations. Um, we'll ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Michael McLean for moderator for one year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, article one. Uh, article two. Shall the electorate of the Wyndham School District ratify the district's longstanding practice of designating Wyndham Town Treasurer as the treasurer of the Wyndham School District as is authorized by sixteen BSA, section four, twenty-six A, and shall the electorate of the Wyndham School District recognize and agree to be bound by the three-year term of the Wyndham Town Treasurer as, as been previously established by vote of the electorate of the town of Wyndham in accordance with seventeen BSA, section twenty-four, six, forty-six, three? Looking for a motion from the floor. Carolyn?
So moved.
Motion's been moved to the floor, need a second. Kathy fails. Okay, uh, any discussion? Carolyn? Yes?
I would like to, uh, uh, I would like to question the need for having a school board at all if we have no school. We seem to have shed our responsibility of educating students by pawning it off onto surrounding towns. I feel like our only, only responsibility should be to pay the check every year as those students go to school. Why do we need to waste resources for a school system we no longer have? Thank you.
Have a go.
Um, with proposals coming through from the governor, there is a lot of uncertainty. And one thing I think families have experienced most is the loss of their voice and where they've gone with trust, that, that there's limited amounts of their ability to advocate independently for their children, and that is when we have the district involved more so. So where could this lead? That's a very good question. I've had a lot of people asking, what's, what's the board going to turn to, right? Is it just, just doing the tuition and, and figuring out, uh, the bus schedule, right? But what happens with our middle schoolers? Are we going to continue to advocate for, for many choices for second aid? Do we need to have more options as far as transportation to ensure people who are making choices can, can transport their kids there? Um, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at and advocated for so that we continue to have a local voice in what's going on. So I hear what you're saying, sir, as far as like, you know, what's the point? The point is, we still have it. We need to manage it and we need to move forward. And where that can go is largely going to be due to how we can advocate for that and how we can ensure that we are, we are getting the best for children.
Okay, so the articles on, on having the treasurer run concurrently with a three-year term. So, um, Kathy, any discussion on that?
I'm trying to make sure I can understand.
Yes.
The treasurer does not get the treasure of the town. If you serve as treasurer of the school, which you are required to do if, if you're elected, you do not get paid for that. That doesn't cost the school district anything.
Okay, any other discussion on article two as written? Okay, seeing no other discussion, we'll bring article two to a vote. Article two. Shall the electorate of the Wyndham School District ratify the district's longstanding practice of designating the Wyndham Town Treasurer as the treasurer of the Wyndham School District as is authorized by sixteen BSA, section four, twenty-six A, and shall the electorate of the Wyndham School District recognize and agree to be bound by the three-year term of the Wyndham Town Treasurer as has been previously established by vote of the electorate of the town of Wyndham in accordance with seventeen BSA, section twenty-six, forty-six, three? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, article two passes as written. Article three. To elect all other officers required by law to be elected at the Wyndham School District Annual Meeting. So we can pass that first clause. Um, so school district director, three-year term ending in twenty-twenty-eight. So looking for, um, so we've got three. I guess I do have to move the article. Thank you, this is parliamentary. Um, so we're going to vote, vote on three different positions here, okay? School district director for a three-year term ending in twenty-twenty-eight. School district director, remainder of three-year term ending in twenty-twenty-six. And, uh, the Wyndham Regional Education District, school district director, three-year term ending in twenty-twenty-eight. Okay, so we'll move the article. Maureen is making a motion to move the article. Uh, and that needs to be seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, and so bring that article to the floor, to elect other officers required by law to be elected at the Wyndham School District meeting. So we'll start with the first position, school district director, three-year term ending in twenty-twenty-eight. And that's, um, that's Abigail's position. So, uh, looking for nominees from the floor. Kathy? Okay, there's a nomination for Abigail. Any other nominations for that position? Yes?
My nominee is Abigail.
Okay, there's a nomination for Crystal. Any other nominations?
That point of clarification, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Aren't these, uh, positions, uh, in the election, why not?
So, uh, good point. Uh, last year at town meeting, we voted to elect all town officers by Australian ballot. School district was not a part of that article and that was not an article in the school district meeting. So all school district officers have to be elected from the floor until there's an article that moves for Australian ballot and there's not an article on this year's, on this year's town meeting. Okay, there's two nominations. So, um, we can do this by voice vote?
I propose paper ballot.
Okay, for, there's been a proposal for a, for a paper ballot that requires a showing of seven hands. Okay, we definitely have that, so, uh... Yeah?
Would it be possible to, to hear from both of the candidates prior to vote?
Yep, we, I'll, I'll give everybody the chance to speak for two minutes. All right, so there's two nominations for the three-year school district position. Uh, Ellen? Ellen, are you ready to have people come up and cast paper ballots? Okay, all right, so we'll go through that process, but first we'll, I, I will grant the, Kathy, you have a...
Thank you for Kathy, because I thought that also too. So on the paper ballot this morning, there were votes to vote for the school board.
Oh, I didn't know that. Are there positions on the ballot for school board?
No.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the ballot myself, so, okay.
Um, all school, everything for school board has to be done from the floor. We only voted last year for, um, elect town elected officials. So it's only the town officials that are on there. My name is on the ballot. So you just follow your, your warning?
Okay, uh, so if there's no objection, I would grant the candidates two minutes per candidate to speak. So Abigail, you were nominated first, you have the right to speak first. You have two minutes.
This is pretty, okay. Um, it has been an honor to serve as your school board director and I'm asking for your continued support to keep working on behalf of our children and our candidate. We are a pivotal moment for our district and now, more than ever, we need steady, experienced leadership to navigate the challenges ahead. Over the years, I've had the privilege of working alongside dedicated parents, teachers and community members to ensure the success of our children. While our district has faced significant challenges, staff changes, legal issues and poor turnover, I remain focused on bringing stability and direction. I learned a great deal from these experiences and I've only come to truly understand the importance of listening to all voices, whether in agreement or not. I remain committed to the core principle of putting the needs of our children first, empowering families and strengthening educational opportunities. Wyndham is a school choice district, offering families the ability to choose the best educational path for their children. Throughout my time on the board, I have worked to make sure parents have tools and resources to make informed decisions. I will continue advocating for policies that support our students and empower our families. However, we are now faced with proposed education changes from Montpelier that could jeopardize the local control we value so deeply. As a mother of three school-aged children, I understand the importance of having a voice in decisions that affect our schools. The potential consolidation and restructuring of districts could limit our ability to make choices that reflect our community's values. I will remain a strong advocate for local representation, ensuring that Wyndham families continue to have a meaningful say in the future of our K through six education. This is a time for steady, thoughtful leadership. The experience I gained on the school board has equipped me with the knowledge and perspective to navigate these uncertain times while keeping our district strong. I am committed to working collaboratively, listening to our community and doing everything I can to support our children. I would be honored to continue serving our community and ask for your vote. Thank you for your stuff.
Thank you, Abigail. Crystal, you have two minutes.
So I didn't write anything because I spoke at the candidates' meeting. Um, I'm running for Abby's seat. I was asked by people to run for this seat who felt like, when they asked questions, they were met with animosity. Um, I want to make it clear, I'm not running because I don't like Abby or I think she's doing a bad job. I collaborate with Dan and Abby quite often on the school choice issue for seventh and eighth grade. I collaborate with all of the Wyndham parents on what's happening in Montpelier. Um, I just want to make it clear that when our Wyndham board joins the West River District meeting, they are a community voice. They don't have a vote. So it is very, very important for parents and community members to join these meetings with the Wyndham school board. They need to hear your voice. It's wonderful that we do it through our school board, but it's very important that they hear your individual voice about what is happening with our seventh through twelfth graders. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. So Ellen, are we ready to move? Okay, Ellen needs a couple of checkout people. And one to check in. Okay, so, so we're going to try and do this... We're gonna do the same we always do. So, we're gonna go in an orderly fashion, as orderly as we can. It's a smaller group this year, so it should go very, very smoothly. You'll get a paper ballot. The two candidates are Abigail Pelton, Crystal Cordvum. You'll write one of their names on a piece of paper. You'll give your name to the check-in person. And then you'll cast the ballot into the ballot box and then the town clerk will count the ballots with the justices of the piece and will announce the victor. So, let's start here. Michael, would you start, please? Kathy, could you bring your robe forward?
How does that happen?
I have some favorite. Yeah, Jolly's gonna be twenty this year.
I wish I had done more like riding around and stuff like that, but I didn't.
I didn't realize that's still wrong. Weird, shaky. Okay, that's the one that has to be asked now. Give me the else. That's a beautiful silhouette.
I've been hearing a little grumbling.
Hopefully, if you were once, maybe it was once a month, maybe.
What was the last thing you just did yesterday?
Yeah, it's on the show, I feel it.
It's like, how has he been down here all this time? It's always fun, I gotta remember. No, he's probably got to be in his seventies. Seems like he's very fit, so hopefully he'll keep going. I mean, even the bills in their eighties are bigger. He's got another ten here.
You know, it wouldn't be a lie, that's nineteen sixty.
That's how they answer.
Boys, I said, not hard.
Can I have your attention, please? Anybody who has not voted, please come to the front of the room. Anybody who's not voted, please come to the front. May I have your attention, please? Can we, can we keep the, can we keep your volume down just a little bit, please? Can I have your attention, please? If there is no objection, Bill Dunko from the Planning Commission would like to say a few words while we're finishing up the vote. So, there's no objection. Bill, you may have the floor.
Thanks, and I'll hear me, okay? Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that next Monday night at six o'clock will be a public hearing. There'll be a public hearing right here at the meeting house and also online about some proposed changes that the Planning Commission is suggesting in our zoning regulations. Most of these changes are pretty minor. A lot of it's just designed to make the zoning regulations more readable and understandable. But there are two that I just want to mention quickly. One, in the, the two historic districts we have currently, if you want to build an in-ground swimming pool or a sports court, like a pickleball court or a tennis court, that's ill permitted use. We feel that it would make more sense to make that a conditional use. The purpose of the historic district is to preserve the look and feel of the old villages. And another interesting thing is barns are not necessarily permitted use. A long time ago, lots more people lived in Wyndham and had a house in a barn than had a house in an in-ground swimming pool. So, we think it might make sense to make in-ground pools and sports courts a permitted use. Doesn't mean you couldn't do it. It means that we could maybe screen it or in other ways allow that, but still preserve the look and feel of the historic district. So, that's one change I want to be aware of. Secondly, right now, according to our current zoning regulations, if you own a recreational vehicle and it's parked on your land for more than ninety days, technically, you're supposed to connect it to a septic system. That doesn't make a lot of sense. You have an RV in your yard and you leave it there all winter, you're gonna use it for a family vacation next summer. It's silly to say it has to be connected to a septic system. So, we're gonna change that, we recommend changing that. We won't go into all the details now. But the bottom line would be if you're living in that RV for more than three straight weeks or more than sixty days a year, then you have to connect it to some kind of system, wastewater system. Otherwise, it's largely going to be unregulated. I don't think they're big, huge changes, but I want you to be aware of them so you're not surprised if they get through. I've summarized all of this in an article that's in the Current News and Notes. I'm going to also ask Ellen to put a town email out about it. The, all the details about the regulation changes are on the town webpage. If you have any questions, feel free to get in touch with me, okay? I'm not gonna go into all the details now. But actually, one quick thing also, I'm also the town energy coordinator. If you think it's cold in here, okay, but it would be a lot colder if these storm window inserts hadn't been made and inserted. The Energy Committee's gonna make more storm window inserts next November. If you're interested in having it put in your house, probably they'd be a little bit smaller than these, but we can do any size. They work very well and they're quite inexpensive. If you're interested, come and see me or any member of the Energy Committee. We'll measure your windows and get you some storm window inserts. Thank you.
If anybody needs the Wi-Fi password, it's Wyndham26 with a capital W. Wyndham26 with a capital W. Okay, congratulations. Um, we, we succeeded. We always do. So, there were seventy-eight ballots cast, two were spoiled. One was not the candidate's and one was blank. Abigail had forty-three votes, Crystal had thirty-three. So, Abigail has been elected for another three-year term. Thank you. Okay, we're still in Article Three. We still have two positions to get through. So, the second position is School District Director for the remainder of the three-year term ending in 2026. Howie, is that in your position? Okay. All right, so looking for nominations from the floor.
I'd like to nominate Kate Correla.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I'd like to nominate Kate Correla.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Kathy?
I'd nominate Howie Iris.
Okay. Nomination for Howie Iris. Kathy's gonna. Any other nominations for the position, School Board Director? Okay. We'll do this by floor vote unless seven voters want a paper ballot. There's a motion for a paper ballot, there needs to be seven people. Raise your hands if you want a paper ballot. I only see two hands, three hands, four hands, five hands, okay. So, this is gonna be a floor vote. Okay, I'm gonna ask this one time. Who wants a paper ballot for, for this position? Please raise your hands.
And keep them up.
And keep them up. I see seven hands. This is democracy, people, okay? All right? Okay. All right, Bill. May I have your attention, please? Howie is withdrawing his name for consideration for this position.
Oh, come on, Howie.
Okay. Okay. All right, so Howie has withdrawn his name for consideration. Are there any other nominees for this article? Or, I'm sorry, for this position? Okay. So, there's a nomination for Kate Correla for the one-year position ending in 2026. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Kate. Congratulations. And, and again, I'd like to say, Howie, thank you for your service. I know you've served on the board and you've served for this school. Nope, you are still an elected physician until she's sworn in. Sorry.
Let's try.
Okay. So, so, uh, everybody who's been elected needs to come and talk to the town clerk and take your oath and sign.
I don't have.
At the town office. Okay? All right, we're still in Article Three. Uh, this is for the Wyndham Region Education District. So, that stands for, okay. Uh, School District Director, three-year term ending in 2028. So, the incumbent is, uh...
Paul Stapleton.
Paul Stapleton. And he is not running. He does not wish to be considered for that position. So, looking for nominations from the floor for the WRED School District Director, three-year term ending in 2028. Michael?
I'd nominate Crystal Corvu.
Okay. Nomination for Crystal. Any other nominations for this three-year WRED School District Director position? See no other nominations? There's, there's a nomination for Crystal Corvu for three-year term for the WRED School District Director. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Crystal, congratulations. And that concludes Article Three. Crystal?
I'm questioning a lot.
Yes.
Hoping we can call the other, call the other issues we need to vote on, to vote on them, because Jimmy wants to vote and he has an emergency heat call.
Okay, so it sounds like you want to move the order of business.
Yes, please.
Is that correct? Okay. Is there an article that you want to move next?
I've lost track of what we have left to vote on. I know we have selling the school for a dollar, correct?
So, that's Article Nine? You want to move Article, you're, you're making a motion.
Yes.
Sounds like you're making a motion to change the order of business so that we now instead of move to Article Four, we move to Article Nine. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so there's been a motion to disrupt the order of business. Believe that. That's a, that's a, um, um, it does need to be seconded and that's a two-thirds majority vote. So, recognize, plan, second step motion. Okay, so this is a motion from the floor to change the order of business. So, next we would be voting on Article Nine, not on Article Four. Okay, exactly, we understand what we're gonna vote on. This requires a two-thirds majority of the body. Okay? So, all those in favor of changing the order of business to move into Article Nine next, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, so we're gonna change the order of business. Article Nine, go next, then we'll go back to Article Four after Article Nine's voted. Mr. Casey?
I'd like to make an optional, where, who has? Want to make an option for Article Nine?
Article, Article Nine's not on the floor yet, Bill, so you're out of order. But when I bring that to the floor, I will recognize you first, okay? All right, so Article Nine. I have to read the whole article.
Drink water first.
Article Nine. "So the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the sale of the school building to the town of Wyndham for one dollar, on the condition that the school building be used for community and/or educational purposes for at least five years. And on further condition, that if the town stops using the school building during this time for such purposes, the school building will be sold back to the school district for one dollar. If during the five-year period following the sale of the school building to the town, the school board believes that the school building is not being used for community and/or educational purposes, it will so notify the town select board. And in the notification, the school board should name an individual to serve as a member of the three-person panel to adjudicate the issue. Under such circumstances, the select board should promptly name a second individual to the three-person panel, and the two designated panel members shall name a third member of the panel. If the school board and select board panelists cannot agree on the third member, the third member of the panel shall be chosen by the then-presiding judge of the Civil Division of the Wyndham Unit of the Vermont Superior Court. The decision of a majority of the panel on the issue shall be binding on the parties." Okay, need a motion from the floor. Bill, do you want to make a motion? Bring the article to, all we, we have to bring it to the floor before any discussion. So, just need a motion, so moved. Is that what you, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I would like.
No, we gotta bring, no, we gotta bring the article to the floor before any discussion. Okay? So, so moved.
I, I, maybe I, I don't understand the order.
Robert's order means that you have to bring the article to the floor before we can start discussion on the article. So, you can't do anything with the article until the article is moved onto the floor. So, I need a motion to move the article. All right, I see, I see a motion from Ron Phillips, and I need a second. Okay, so I'll recognize Michael Pelton for the second. Now, I gotta read the article, and then it's on the floor, and then Ron has the right to speak first, and he made a motion. Article Nine. "So the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the sale of the school building to the town of Wyndham for one dollar, on the condition that the school building be used for community and/or educational purposes for at least five years. And on further condition, that if the town stops using the school building during this time, for such purposes, the school building will be sold back to the school district for one dollar. If during the five-year period following the sale of the school building to the town, the school board believes that the school building is not being used for community and/or educational purposes, it will so notify the town's select board. And then in the notification, the school board should name an individual to serve as a member of the three-person panel to adjudicate the issue. Under such circumstances, the select board should promptly name a second individual to the three-person panel, and the two designated panel members shall name a third member of the panel. If the school board and select board panelists cannot agree on the third member, the third member of the panel shall be chosen by the then-presiding judge of the Civil Division of the Wyndham Unit of the Vermont Superior Court. The decision of a majority of the panel on the issue shall be binding on the parties." Ron, you brought the article to the floor, any discussion? Okay. Mr. Casey?
I'd like to offer optional wording for this article. The article starts at the one dollar, period. There are no, no conditions on it. Resign with the school board in the last year. I think let the select board and the town's people decide. Period. So, fine, it's just that for one line, where the school sells the building to the town for a dollar. Period. No condition.
Okay, so you're, you're making a motion to amend the article to end after the one... the $1 and the second line of the article.
Correct.
Okay, so there's been a motion to amend the article. An amendment needs to be seconded, and it requires a majority vote. Okay?
I'd like a paper ballot.
Okay, we're-- we'll get into that. We have to discuss the article first. All right, so I'm sorry, who seconded that amendment? Tam-- Tam Bronson seconded that amendment. Okay, so now we have to vote on the amendment. Okay, we're not voting on the article. We're voting on the amendment. All right?
Discussion?
So, any discussion, Bill, on the amendment? Okay.
Can you, um, can you explain a little bit why you'd like--
In the last year, the school board spent over $40,000 in ending the building or keeping it open. One of the wonderful things they did was to offer a daycare for two select people. One of whom benefited via was a school board member. I don't think that kind of judgment is going to go as necessary. And actually, they've shown in the last year are not credible, in my opinion. So my idea is let the townspeople and the select board make the decision.
Okay. Any other-- any other discussion, Alan?
Yes, I would like to add to Mr. Casey that after the $1, the words "as is" be added.
Okay, so you're making a motion to amend the amendment. We haven't voted on the amendment first. So we're still in discussion. Okay, we have to discuss before we vote. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Yes, Mr. Persa?
Yes, I'd like to know who is going to be-- I would like to know who's gonna be saddled with maintaining the cost of maintaining this building.
Okay. So, so what we're discussing right now is the amendment to the article. We're gonna get into discussion of the article and the merits of the article at that point, but right now there's a motion on the floor which we have to-- we have to act on to amend the article to end the language at $1. Okay, that's the amendment that's on the floor and it's been seconded. Okay, any other discussion on that amendment? Yes?
You can hear me now? I'm relatively new to Wyndham. I'm Cecilia Dietrich, and, um, many of you know this, but my husband and I do live right next to the elementary school. And so this would affect us. I am completely against changing or amending this, uh, uh, proposal. I think that it is extremely important that we maintain the school building as a building for the community as described in the original, um, article. Uh, one reason for that is because we-- I see this just as a new resident, um, losing a sense of community, which, um, when you lose a sense of community, then what are you but just, you know, places to sleep? Um, and maybe work. I know we have people who work in the town, too. So, um, I strongly disagree that we should be changing this article. And I would like to-- I would like to encourage people to support the original article, that this building be used for the community, not just for the kids, um, but for all age groups. Thank you.
You have an amendment to an amendment.
Correct.
And you need to act on that amendment to the amendment for-- you have to go back in reversal. So if there's an amendment to the amendment--
You don't vote on the amendment first?
No, the amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we're still in discussion, so I saw Crystal's hand. Did you want to--
I'd like to call a question.
Okay, so now we have to vote on calling the question. I need a second on calling the question. Calling the question requires a two-thirds majority vote. So we would be voting on ending discussion on the amendment to the article.
The second.
We haven't discussed the second amendment yet, so, um, so I think we've gotten ourselves into a sort of circular logic here. So, let me just bring us back to where I understand the argument. Everybody-- maybe somebody can correct me. There was a motion to amend the article. There was a second motion to amend that amendment further. Okay? And then there was a motion to call a question. It's been brought to my attention that an amendment to an amendment has to be voted on before the amendment itself is voted on. So what we would need to do is we would need to backtrack because I didn't recognize that amendment to the amendment. We would need to second that motion. Okay? All right, everybody follow me so far? And then we would have to call the question to end discussion. And then we'd have to vote on the second amendment. Then we'd have to vote on the first amendment. And then we'd have to vote on the article. Does everybody understand that? This is how parliamentary rules work. This is how Robert's rules of orders work. This is how it's going to happen unless somebody has any objection. Auntie?
Can we hear the second amendment again?
Yes, I will bring that up.
Thank you.
Okay? So I will recognize Alan McLean. You had an amendment to the amendment. Would you please bring that to the floor?
Yes, my amendment to the amendment is that we add the words "as is" after the, uh, $1 on this first sentence. There's been a lot of participation by residents of the town of things that can be done with the school. Some great ideas. And I think that the residents of the town can use the school in a way that's been recommended. Kathy Fells, among others, had voted great ideas. So I think if we just have it as is, leave it up to the residents of the town to decide how they feel.
Okay, so there's-- there's amendments to the amendment. There's a motion to amend Mr. Casey's amendment. And that amendment to the amendment needs to be seconded to brought to the-- to be brought to the floor. Is-- do I see a second on that amendment? Okay, that's been seconded, Mr. Persa. Okay? Now, the motion has been called. All right? So so because I didn't recognize the second amendment, I'm gonna postpone that, calling the question, because I do see some hands up. And I wanna recognize somebody who hasn't spoken on this issue yet. Okay, before I recognize calling the question. All right? Carol, I see your hand.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to hear from the school board as to why they chose this language so that we can better understand what we're voting on. So if we could have an explanation from the school board regarding both amendments, I'd appreciate it.
I think others would, too.
Okay, I will allow that, uh, school board.
Hello? There we go. Um, so when we had first put the article together, um, I received, I mean, feedback that it was too big. And it did not, um, really give an idea to the community as to what this would look like. We brought this to our attorney and really have it very detailed and laid out so that it can be clear the process, what everything could look like, uh, and the intention of retaining it for, um, community and/or educational purposes. Now, with the argument of it being made up by the town, that's still made up by the town. It's not definitive of any specific idea to go into that building. And many of the interests that were brought up, um, through Kathy's hard work, they all fit that criteria. So there's nothing that has been brought forward, um, that isn't going to benefit the community or, um, or have a chance to, um, provide educational services. So, um, very different things can happen, and this is just wording to lay out as clearly as possible to the community kinda how the process looks. And that if it was, you know, to not fit that category, that this is also a process that would be played out as to how to get back into making follow that. Does that make any sense? Okay, so if that is helpful, I don't know if there's any specific questions to that, but this was written by our attorney um, to really answer the questions the community was given when they were not happy with the first article as it's written. So, thank you.
I see David, Jerry.
Um, I would question why you need all that perplicia after, uh, the initial statement. It seems to restrict the town from uh, doing what they want with the building. Could be for education or whatnot in the future. And the town will be the person getting the maintenance on. So I would be concerned if I personally bought a building and had somebody restricting it potentially, maybe they'll take it away after I invest the money in it. Maintain it and/or develop it.
Does anyone-- Is there anyone here with an idea that doesn't meet the criteria? I mean, I haven't heard anybody come up with an idea for the building that would not be for the benefit of the community or educational purposes.
So, they run twenty-four, town office.
Those all fit for community. I mean, this is not anything that is hindering, um, for that, so that would be my-- my two cents to put in was those words were big enough to encompass many cases.
Okay. Kathy, I saw your hand.
I wanted to ask a second.
No, this is the time for discussion.
Bill's coming to me, Kathy.
I just, I don't-- the word "as is," the only thing that bothers me or worries me a little is that we don't, um, let's say that the town, that we decide to do this for a dollar. Then there will be some negotiations, real estate negotiations. The town may say, "We want the school district to remediate the asbestos tiles as part of our acquisition and sale of this for a dollar." I'm afraid if we insert the word "as is," that that might hamstring the ability of the town to discuss what they might want the district to do before the building is conveyed to the town. Because there are some things that I think we might wanna put in there as conditions of sale, even if it is only for a dollar. And the word "as is" might improve the town's. I would not be in favor of the second article. I think it would hurt the second amendment. The first amendment, I doubt that. I think we're all in agreement that the town probably would act in the best interest of the town. Maybe one of them loves that language. But, um, and I suppose you could even argue a real estate development. Could the town decides to sell the building, it could benefit the town. I don't-- those are all conversations in our future. But I do believe the words "as is" might hamstring our negotiations for sale. We're going to also have real estate costs. I mean, when you buy a building, you have title transfer, you have a lot of cost. It's not so-- we are going to negotiate what and who pays the buyer or the seller for those additional costs that are part of any real estate transaction.
I saw Michael Pelton's hand.
Okay, the other key piece to the having to vote on those conditions, so if, for instance, the transfer does happen and the town, let's say, puts together some sort of a study to look at what the needs are of the town, like we're talking actively currently about doing a needs assessment. And if for some reason the town decides that the building just doesn't fit within that needs assessment, I think it's important for us to consider adding a mechanism to return the building back to the school because we have to remember from the last sixty years or more or less, the school district itself has been putting money into the building, built the building and developed the product of the-- built the building and developed the facility and so forth. All of that money, at least at this point, costs us more when we look at mobility, the way the system is built. So if the building is sold and the town owns it, that money comes back into our municipal coffers. The catch is if the school were to sell the building, for every dollar the school spends, we send an extra one to mobility. So if the school retained that money, it can reduce their overall expenses and we get, as a town, we get much better bang for the buck. Because we're now all of a sudden spending less. It reduces their budget considerably. So at the end of the day, if the building, if the decision of the building being sold, some other entity of the town happens, or other entity other than the town, she's saying "happens," it's better if that money goes into the school coffers versus the town. Five years sounds like a long time when you look at it, but the reality is not that long when we're looking at planning and developing for a project. It's probably gonna take us a year to really understand what we need and how it fits into the big picture. Maybe there's a year or two of proper development and so forth, depending on the direction of the building and how we use it. So it gives us a little bit of time for planning, figure out what's going on. And if the-- if the town chooses to develop the property and we end up, uh, putting in significant resources, I'm certain that the school district isn't going to, uh, A, upset, and I'm certain that it would be respectful of that investment.
Yes, Bridgette.
Thank you. Just in response to the amendment, uh, two pieces. Jamaica just really went through something similar in where they were voting on whether they'd be operational or not operational. And one of the pieces of that vote was if they were not operational, they would sell it to the town of Jamaica. And they also had the same wording, uh, maybe not exactly the same, but the building had to be used for educational purposes for five years. So I don't think this is like an outlandish thing that we're doing. I think it makes sense, um, just keeps it a community building. So we're not the first ones to have something like this. Um, I think it's also kind of important to think about when we talk about negotiating with the school district and the town. We are both, um, we're now part of a bigger-- we're part of a bigger SUV, but our school district is Wyndham homeowners. And our town is Wyndham homeowners. Um, when you have a school district, it's a smaller portion that pays it. So I think those are just important things to factor in for this.
Howie?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I'm not a lawyer, but a lawyer wrote those words. I've spent a lot of money on them, so. And I'm sure that this is the proper way to handle this item. You know, so I urge us to support the language as written for no other reason that, you know, this word put in time and hire an attorney to come up with these words to protect us. And even if you don't like it, in five years, it's done. So this is just added protection for all of us who've spent so much money in school taxes over the course of living here, invested in that school, that that property is used for the benefit of the town in an educational manner, for at least five years. And we can get all the things we get on.
Hey, Bill?
This is Bob Fisher who helped us write this article. Is that correct?
Uh, not on the town side, but on the school board side. So it's Mark O'Gra, who previously helped us with Act Forty-Six, the consolidation.
Did Bob Fisher write that article?
Hey, Tam?
I agree with Dave Cherry, and I think part of the issue in my mind is I don't understand why we're gonna have an extra constraint on what the town's gonna do. So if the town decides to buy it, we're gonna do whatever we want to with it. We could be in a position best-- be in a position best intentions or not, where we put money into it and find out that we didn't meet something, we all know that language is fading, and that's fine, but like Dave, Jerry, if I was entering into a contract and had this kind of stuff, I would go running.
Yes, Dan?
Yeah, I just want to add, to what, I just want to add to what Michael said, so in terms of tax implications, this gives us a contingency where if we find that the town's not using it, we're not using it, and we want to sell it, bringing down taxes on the school board side is more beneficial to us on the town side. So converting it back to the school board, so then we can sell it, prep it, and get a fair market price, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, it's a million-dollar asset at the very least, so somewhere. Okay, so, so at the very least, it's a million dollars, with a fair market analysis, it's probably higher. And so we don't want to waste the million-dollar asset and miss the forest here at trees.
Okay, any other discussion, Mr. President?
I just want to respond to that thinking that that school building and its small parcel of land is worth a million dollars in the town of Wyndham. I feel that that is, that is an absolute mockery of the real estate market, and that building is asbestos-ridden, and it was too small to be used as a school, it will never be efficiently used as a school, as a two-bedroom schoolhouse. It can never be done, we don't have the students here, if we ever get them, I feel like that school would not be sufficient to ever reopen. I think we should tear the place down and just save the land.
Go ahead.
I mean, I understand how you feel, but a lot of thought went into the study on this. Great money was, was found by Kathy to really go through that entire building, break by break, and figure out exactly nuts and bolts, what is the cost to it, what is the price of the bottom line, and then there's a lot that we could do with that building, but if we don't, then if we want to bring down taxes, then, then a contingency plan like this would be in our best interest collectively.
I would like to ask clarification from Kathy, I understood her to say that it's worth, if the building was replaced, and then it would be worth a million dollars. I did not hear what the building and the land currently are considered what their value is.
We have not had an appraisal by anybody as to the market value if we were to try to sell this building tomorrow. The Ellen is exactly correct, a million dollars was if we were to replace the building we have now, to do what it does, a school, a four-thousand-square-foot school building with all of the things that are in that report, it would cost us somewhere between, who knows? Because this was a figure given eighteen months ago, it always involves what the construction marketplace is at any point in time, so we have not had an accurate cost estimate, but if we go back to replacement house that the school district gave to this building in May of 2023, it was about a million dollars. I would imagine that if we were to want to sell the building as a town or school, the next thing we'll do would be to do a market assessment. We haven't done that, so.
Allison?
I call the question on Amendment Number Two.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to call the question that requires a second and a two-thirds majority. Crystal, seconds. Okay, so now we're voting to end discussion on Amendment Two, okay? So the Amendment Two, which is the amendment to Mr. Casey's amendment, is to end Article Nine after the word "one dollar" with the words "as is," okay? That's what we're voting on. We're voting on amending the language of the Article Nine to end the language of Article Nine after "one dollar as is" on the second line of Article Nine. That's what we're, what we're voting on calling the question first, okay? So any discussion, all right? It's been brought to the floor, it's been seconded. All those in favor of calling the question and any discussion on the amendment, the Second Amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, discussion ends on, on the Second Amendment. Now we're going to vote on the Second Amendment, okay? Everybody understand who we're voting on? Anybody not understanding? Okay, so the motion is to amend Mr. Casey's amendment, we're not voting on Mr. Casey's amendment, we're voting on the Second Amendment, okay? We're voting on whether or not Article Nine will end after "one dollar as is" on the second line, okay? That's what we're voting on. Shall the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the sale of the school building to the town of Wyndham for "one dollar as is," okay? That's what we're voting on, that language. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so I can't do that by a voice vote, so we, we need a majority vote, which is more than half, so all those in favor of the Second Amendment, please raise your hands, and we'll count hands, and keep them, keep them raised until... Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hands. Okay, the nays appear to have it, the nays do have it, the Second Amendment does not pass, okay? Now we're back to the First Amendments, okay? First Amendment is to end Article Nine af- after the word "one dollar," period.
And Crystal Court made the motion to call that question.
Right, so there's a, right. Okay, so there's a motion, Crystal, would you like to make that motion again to call the question?
I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Kathy Scott? Okay, so we're going to call the question and discussion on the Amendment to the article, all right? Okay, we're going to, we're going to vote on, call on the question, and then I'll recognize that, all right? So there's a motion to call the question and discussion on the Amendment to the article. The amendment is, shall the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the school, the sale of the school building to the town of Wyndham for "one dollar," period, okay? So we're voting on calling the question and any discussion, all right? All those in favor of ending discussion on that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, question's been called, now we're going to vote on that amendment, okay? This is what it looks like, people, this is democracy. Article, Article Nine, the amendment, shall the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the sale of the school building to the town of Wyndham for "one dollar." Bill Casey had a motion for a paper ballot, are there seven voters who want a paper ballot for this amendment? Please raise your hand if you want a paper ballot. Just for the amendment. Okay, so I only see two hands, so we're going to do this by voice vote, okay? The amendment is a majority vote. All right, so we're voting on the amendment, not on the article, all right? Everybody clear on that? So all those in favor of amending the article to end after "one dollar" on the second line, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I have to do that again by, by show of hands, sorry. Show of hands, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hands. The nays appear to have it, the nays do have it, the amendment fails. Okay, now we're back to the original article as written, okay? We're going to go into discussion. Kathy, do you have? Kathy wants to call the question, that requires, I need a second and a two-thirds majority vote, Beth McDonald. All right, so we're going to vote on calling the question, ending discussion on Article Nine, okay? So all those in favor of ending discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, the question's been called, Article Nine, do we need to read it out loud? My parliamentarian says I do, so just bear with me, I have to read it out loud. Article Nine, shall the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the sale of the school building to the town of Wyndham for "one dollar" on the condition that the school building be used for community and/or educational purposes for at least five years, and on further condition that if the town stops using the school building during this time for such purposes, the school building will be sold back to the school district for "one dollar." If during the five-year period following the sale of the school building to the town, the school board believes that the school building is not being used for community and/or educational purposes, it will so notify the town select board, and in the notification, the school board shall name an individual to serve as a member of a three-person panel to adjudicate the issue. Under such circumstances, the select board shall promptly name the second individual to the third-person panel, three-person panel, and the two designated panel members shall name the third member of the panel. If the school board and select board panelists cannot agree on the third member, the third member of the panel shall be chosen by the then-presiding judge of the civil division of the Wyndham Unit of the Vermont Superior Court. The decision of the majority of the panel on the issue should be binding on parties. Okay, we're voting yes for the article, no's against the article. All those in favor of Article Nine as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, Article Nine passes as written. Okay, so it's twelve fifteen, did Cindy go down and start the? Okay, so before we continue with the school district meeting, because my stomach's grumbling, I would entertain a motion to, to break the motion, so, I'm sorry? I can't hear you. Yeah, okay, so, all right, I'll take my guidance from everybody, do we want to just power through the last four articles, five articles?
Yes.
So you guys are not hungry? So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, that's right, yeah, okay, it's like a horse going back to the barn, they're always fast. All right, Article Four, Article Four, we're going to keep going through, okay? Sorry for the premature excitement. Article Four, to compensate the school directors, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each is included in the proposed school budget for 2025, 2026.
Some of...
There's, a motion's been moved, seconded by Kathy Fitz. Okay, Article Four, to compensate the school districts, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each is included in the proposed school budget for 2025, 2026. Any discussion? Bill?
The past number of years, it's been seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Try it again.
The past number of years, it's stipend was seven hundred and fifty dollars, last year was raised to twelve fifty. Now, we're no school building, and the supervisory union doing the budget, lots left, for example, more to do, I'd like to see it drop to seven hundred and fifty, which was original.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the article to seven hundred and fifty dollars as a compensation, so that amendment needs to be seconded and be brought to the floor. Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded, all right, so any discussion on that amendment to the article? Dan?
Yeah, Mr. Casey said that the supervisory union does the budget. Mr. Casey said that the supervisory union does the budget. Supervisory union takes inputs from the school board, and put time and effort into that budget and previous budgets, so I want to make that clear, that we do put the effort in, as if you guys decide what that compensation is, but I think we have to make sure that that's clear to Allison.
Howie?
It was seven hundred and fifty dollars back in two thousand also.
Yes.
In fact, you know, this is a time-consuming job, and it's not all that much fun, so to sort of insult to use it this way.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment to the article? Allison?
I just want to say, I was on the school board for nine years and got off in two thousand nine, and it was seven hundred and fifty then, I think twelve fifty is a bargain for all you guys do, so I say stick with the original language of Article Four.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Crystal?
Our circumstance has changed, we don't have an operational school, we're not dealing with as much as we used to, like the stuff Alice and Carolyn, Beth, they all dealt with is much different than what our new board is dealing with, and the minutes are outsourced, so I would agree with lowering the pay.
Kathy?
I believe the school board, I believe the school board is the only thing that stands between us and whatever the union wants to do, the supervisory union. We have to have some input, and they're the ones we need to give the information to do that input. Twelve hundred and fifty dollars, how many meetings do they have a year? Come on, no.
Okay. Dan?
Also, I just want to note, from a budget standpoint, the difference between twelve fifty and seven fifty to your taxes is very small, we're talking with many. Not, not even.
Okay, see no other discussion on the amendment, oh, I'm sorry, Mathieu?
Thank you, I used to be on the school board, or I was on the school board for eleven years, it is an outrageously intense job, and whoever disregards that or diminishes the work that this board puts in there so that we have some kind of input before the super, the supervisory union and the state, and if you think about it, we're talking twelve months for eleven hundred or twelve hundred and fifty dollars. The work we put in there, whether or not we have, there is a school building, as long as there are children in this town, we need a school board, we need to kind of figure out where we're going, and I have friends in other communities who decided to merge with other districts and lose their voice, or have one voice on a board of eleven. I'm not sure that you understand what that means, and I think we should definitely support our school board as best as we can. Thank you.
Okay, see no other discussion on the amendment?
One thing?
Go ahead.
After taxes, that amounts like five hundred dollars, not like for... So it's not like, really doing this for the money. Uh, it was clearly less than that at 750, I think it was $411 when it was 750 after taxes. This is what, um, that comes out to. So this is not huge funding, just so you know. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion on the amendment, we're gonna vote on the amendment. Okay, all those in favor of amending Article Four from $1,250 to $750, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays do have it, the amendment fails. Back into Article Four. Seeing no discussion on Article Four. We're gonna move into the vote. Article Four, to compensate the school directors, $1,250 each, as included in the proposed school budget for 2025-2026. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article Four passes as written. Article Five. Show the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend $506,398, which is the amount that the school board has determined to be necessary in the ensuing fiscal year. The Wyndham School District estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in per pupil spending, per pupil education spending of $14,117.28, which is 4.46% higher than per pupil education spending for the current year. Looking for motions from the floor. Kathy? So moved?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, the motion's been moved by Kathy. Second. Okay. Article Five, show the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend $506,398, which is the amount that the school board has determined to be necessary in the ensuing fiscal year. The Wyndham School District estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in per pupil education spending of $14,117.28, which is 4.46% higher than per pupil education spending for the current year. Discussion, Kathy? Any, any discussion on the article? Bill?
Sorry, two quick questions. Why is per pupil spending higher? And what is the actual final tax rate? Print on page 56 is awfully small, or 56 or 53. So the first question is, why is per pupil spending going up? Because the amendment, the article says per pupil spending will be $14,117.28, which is 4.46% higher than per pupil spending for the current year. I'm just curious, why is it going up?
Howie?
Well, we have no choice, we have tuition our kids to a school, and parents have opted for talented, and that's the cause to towns. That was a decision that was made by the school board down there to fund schools at that level, and then build us at that level, and so it is.
Okay, Bill, did you have another question?
Uh, when is the final, if this is passed, what's the actual tax rate?
So the, uh, the, the CLA, um, isn't, that's a, is a potential CLA, so I have a common model appraisal. It's, currently sits at, uh, $1.23, is the assumed number. So a dollar and 23 cents is the tax rate, compared to the $1.53, which was last year's.
Okay, sorry, I'm not trying to be difficult.
No.
On page 56, where is it?
At 95.
What?
Uh, 95, we just see right down to the, um, FY15. In FY16. We add the bottom, we call it, I call it, all of the bottom. Then, $1.23.
Yeah, I see, I see the $1.23. I was just trying to figure out where the heck it was, um...
I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay. Very good, thanks.
Okay, Crystal?
So, I just wanna let Bill know that part of the reason the tuition costs have gone up is because the healthcare for the employees has increased again dramatically.
Okay. Any other discussion on Article Five? Seeing no discussion, we'll bring Article Five to a vote. Show the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend $506,398, which is the amount that the school board has determined to be necessary in the ensuing fiscal year. The Wyndham School District estimates that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in per pupil education spending of $14,117.28, which is 4.46% higher than per pupil education spending for the current year. All those in favor of Article Five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article Five passes as written. Article Six. Show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the creation of an operational reserve fund. Looking for a motion from the floor.
So moved. Second.
So moved. By Allison, seconded by Carolyn. Article Six, show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the creation of an operational reserve fund. Allison, any discussion?
Um, I think I would turn that over to the school board.
Yeah, I could explain the next three.
Let's take it one at a time.
Yeah. So, the next three are tied to each other. We have to create, uh, going down to the capital reserve fund. We have a reserve fund for transportation, and it's been sitting there for a number of years. What we learned from the ESU is that following this year, there could be a penalty for the amount of money, for amount of time that we've had that money in essentially lockbox. And so to avoid that, we want to move it to another fund, but to do that, we have to create an operational reserve fund. We have to make sure that we have the authorization to move funds into it, and then move the amount from that lockbox into a more generalized fund. So it's just to avoid losing out on that 105, or, yeah, 105,000.
Any other discussion on Article Six? Yes, go first.
Is it possible to vote on transferring that to an operational fund back into the school district, to just roll it over and reduce our taxes for one year and be done with it? And cancel that?
Don't know the answer.
So, there's a good reason why we add a capital fund, it's because we have transportation costs, namely a bus. So when the bus, it's gonna continually depreciate, and we have a timetable of, say, 2030 is expected for us to trade in and get a new bus. So if we wanna maintain our transportation district, then we're gonna need that money in order to, uh, trade in our current bus and get a new bus. That said, I don't disagree on using some of it to break down the tax rate. If, if there's an opportunity for an article.
I don't think we can add an article that hasn't been warned, but, um, maybe next year's. Uh, okay, so we're still on Article Six.
No, Article Ten. To transact any other business, they have to go to the floor.
Right, but that's not binding, you can't, you can't have any binding business in a non-binding article. So, it has to be warned.
Could it be an amendment, well, we're not at Article Eight yet, but could it be an amendment to Article?
We can discuss that, but... Crystal?
Uh, can you guys just remind me? I've attended most of your meetings, but, um, that reserve fund, were you going to repair the bus? Or are we looking into a new bus?
Or can you, uh, I hate to put you on the spot, but can you speak a little bit about the bus, the current state of it, and what we've talked about yesterday, the time? I'll take that whole figure out.
Hello?
Yeah, you can hear.
It's on.
Hello? Basically, uh, Reeves evaluated the bus the last time it was in for service, and feel like it has some useful life in it, but it is showing signs of wear and tear for sure, it's got 110,000 miles on it, it's got some rust damage, it's got, some bodywork that it needs, the engine seems to run well. So it's worthwhile to keep it on the road for a while, but it's getting to the point where it's gonna need to be replaced, I think maybe 2030, when he pushed it, to be honest with you. It's, for right now, it's decided that for this year at least, it was gonna be worthwhile to keep it on the road, given all the other budgetary, you know, pressures that part of it, so... Right now, it's still safe, I'm not uncomfortable driving it with students on it, but there's definitely wear and tear and signs that it's getting near the end of its useful life.
Okay, any other discussion on Article Six? Yes?
Yeah, my question is, uh, if we move, basically, if you're looking to move the capital reserve fund into an operational reserve fund, and we want to replace the bus, that's capital, that's not operational. So what would be able to use the funds, whatever it's called, what would be able to use it to replace the bus, make silence, care, and we have transportation for our students?
Agreed, yeah, so the difference between the two funds, the capital reserve fund is for either transportation or capital improvements to the building. Obviously, we just optioned the building to be sold. But for transportation, this other fund is more generalized, you can use it for, in any purposes. So, we're taking it out of the very specific fund, which is a capital reserve fund, and moving it to an operational fund, which means we can use it for things outside of, of capital reserve, uh, outside of capital resources transportation. So it, it's a more broad bucket to put the money in, I guess is what I would say.
And that's based on advice to, to get funds out of the capital reserve fund in order not to be penalized? Is that right?
Yeah, so, so yes, it could be used.
I think as long as it can be used to purchase a new bus, I'm, I'm fine with it, but I, we don't want money, this is a lot of money that's already in that fund, set aside for a bus, and really wanna make sure the kids have bus transportation in the future.
Agreed, yeah.
Okay, so we're still on Article Six, alright? Any other discussion on Article Six? Seeing no other discussion on Article Six. Um, show the vote, we'll bring it to a vote. Article Six, show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the creation of an operational reserve fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article Six passes as written. Article Seven. Show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the operational surplus, if any, from fiscal year 2025 to the operational reserve fund. Looking for a motion from the floor.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Carolyn.
Second.
Seconded by Pat McLean. Article Seven, show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the operational surplus, if any, from fiscal year 2025 to the operational reserve fund. Discussion, Carolyn?
Uh, I think it's a good idea, I think the school board has a good plan, and so I would support this.
Okay. Any other discussion on Article Seven? Okay, seeing no other discussion on Article Seven, we'll bring it to a vote. Article Seven. Show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the operational surplus, if any, from fiscal year 2025 to the operational reserve fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article Seven passes as written. Article Eight. Show the voters of Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the capital reserve fund in the amount of $105,805.53 to the operational reserve fund. Looking for a motion from the floor.
So moved.
Thank you, Carolyn. Seconded by Kathy Scott. Article Eight, show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the capital reserve fund in the amount of $105,805.53 to the operational reserve fund. Discussion, Carolyn?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I would yield my time to, uh, Mr. Roth.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, with the upcoming bus reported, probably in a couple of years, maybe not by 2030. That said, we do have a little bit of money in that fund that we could stand to move to put it directly into the budget. Well, I'd recommend, based on looking at the budget and our numbers have been in the past years, I pro, I would recommend an amendment to move 20,000 back into the budget.
Okay.
To, but we had a hard tax season last year, and it's not lost on me, and we also overpaid, so we're gonna get some of that back, that 10 cents that was a clerical error on the supervisory union's part. But I would like a little more relief for, for everyone, and I think it would make sense to move 20,000 from that operational fund back into the budget, to really reduce our taxes, give us a little bit of room.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is you'd like to amend Article Eight to say, show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the capital reserve fund in the amount of $85,805.53 to the operational reserve fund, and $20,000 to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, does everybody understand the amendment that Mr. Roth has proposed? That needs to be seconded and be brought to the floor?
Second.
It's been seconded by Allison. That requires a simple majority on an amendment. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay, so there's an amendment. Seeing no discussion, we'll bring the amendment to the vote. The amendment is, show the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the capital reserve fund in the amount of $85,805.53 to the operational reserve fund, and $20,000 to the general fund. We're voting on the amendment, not on the article itself. Okay? All those in favor of the amendment as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, the amendment passes, now we're back to the article as amended. Any discussion on the amended article?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, okay, so we're gonna transfer, basically, I guess at this point, we're looking at transferring $85,000 that's going to be currently passed to us from the reserve fund that was set up for the, um, purchase of a new school bus at some point in time, and move those funds, if we pass this, into the operational reserve fund, is that correct?
No, into the general fund. $20,000 into the general fund.
Yes, having gone to $85,000.
Yes, $85,000 to the operational reserve fund.
Yeah, so, does that, I just wanna make sure, does that preserve, kind of what Pat was going for? You know, this money that was in a capital reserve fund, so that it's protected, and that when the time comes, we can buy new bus, you know, we can't go and rob from that fund to serve other expenses, whatever the other expenses may be. So it just, is there a way to, you know, keep it separate in that other fund, such that it's not ready to pay for other expenses? Because what we don't want is, you can see that money, we're already giving $20,000 back to the taxpayers, so that fund is now reduced for the bus by 20,000, if we pass this. And I'm just, you know, questioning, if it goes back into the oper, the remaining $85,000 goes into the operational reserve fund, what is the protection for keeping it there for purchasing the school bus, other than, uh, we'll do our best?
I have a couple of questions, Todd.
Okay. George?
What is, uh, what is there in the budget?
There we go, uh, what do we have in the budget for repairs for the school bus currently? And then, secondly, how quickly, uh, would we be able to rebuild that fund, because the bus is definitely not gonna make it to 2030. Uh, and if it does, it's gonna be pretty comical looking, unless we do a substantial amount of bodywork to it in the near future, so... I wouldn't recommend taking too much money out of that fund, knowing how much new buses cost. And knowing that if we wanna continue to run this bus, we need to put on increments, so... $105,000 definitely isn't enough for the next three years.
Yes, so, the first question, I'll answer that question, so... The first question, it's on the budget, I mean, I took a lot of those numbers. But yeah, we've, we've added steadily throughout, um, the past three years, so that goes in my calculation of by, uh, even before, uh, 2030, we should have enough for the next bus, along with... we should have enough for the next bus along with using the bus as a trade-in for that next bus. In terms of repair costs, that's already built into the budget of this town report, so for the early things. $10,000. There you go. There you go. Yep, that's what it says. It's line, uh...
Yeah, last one.
Oh, yeah. Five, four, three, one. Line five, four, three, one, the amount of $10,000. Yep. So that's already baked into our budget. So the Article Five, Article Five, I would cast. That's already part of that. That won't come out of this.
How much are we adding to that fund really? Because new buses are cheap. It's about $100,000. Maybe a little, maybe probably $150,000 plus minus for a new bus. That's probably a little cheaper than that.
Yeah, what we've seen in the past years is about $25,000, $20,000, $25,000 that we've reduced to the budget.
Per year?
Yeah, per year.
So if you take $85,000, after you take $105,000, and you add $25,000 a year, in three years, it's about realistic to believe you could replace it, but not guaranteed.
And along with the trade on the bus.
Trade's going to be negligible in three years the way that they're costing away. Unless you're quite happy sending that $10,000 into the fix now. That's just my opinion.
Does anybody know how much a new bus costs right now?
Probably $90,000.
Probably about $150,000, that's what I heard recently.
Okay, so somewhere between $90,000 and $150,000. Okay, any other discussion, Mr. Persson?
Yes, you're all assuming that there's going to be children who be driving around in school buses. Why don't we wait until that, that school bus dies or we have a need for them? And then at that time, just finance it like everybody else does.
The reason that we don't typically finance is exactly what Michael was talking about. When we put money up to mock earlier, for what every dollar, we're sending $2 to the capital for it for the general fund. So over the clean of, say, like five years, 10 years, we would see a substantial amount of money brought to the state.
Yes, but as, as history has shown, they constantly misappropriate funds. So you put that in there, it just gives them an opportunity to misappropriate the money. Why give them any money? Worry about it when the problem arises. That's my point. We don't need to fund something five years in the future to that. This is ridiculous.
I think I missed your point, thank you.
Okay, I saw Crystal's hand.
I definitely disagree with Mr. Persson. I have two kids on that bus. I would prefer it don't be torn apart with that money. I have transportation concerns, but they can be addressed at a regular school meeting, which I will address. But I would like to call the question.
Okay, there's a motion to call the question. That needs to be seconded. Okay, you're seconding the question? Seconding, calling the question? Okay, there's a motion to call the question. That ends discussion. That requires a two-thirds majority vote. I think we all know the rules at this point. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Sorry, the question is being called. Discussion ends on that article. Article Eight. Shall the voters, as amended, okay? Shall the voters of the Wyndham School District authorize the moving of the capital reserve fund in the amount of $85,805.53 to the operational reserve fund and $20,000 to the general fund? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article Eight passes. Before we go to lunch, we still have Article Ten in this school, school meeting. So Article Ten. To transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Now, this is a non-binding article. We can't go down any binding business. Need a motion to bring to the floor?
I'll move it.
Okay, so moved by Carolyn. These can be seconded. Seconded by Kathy. Any discussion, Article Ten, to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I was, I would like to know what the overpayment was with the surplus. Can you elaborate?
There was a question on the overpayment.
Just the P4, that one?
I'm sorry.
You asked what the overpayment was.
The over, the surplus payment that is spoken that you would get reimbursed for last, for the past year?
Yeah, so it's on, um... Put my hand, put my hand, you can do your words. All right, so if you go to page... Okay, so on page 53, when you look at FY26 proposed budget, the revenue, so that bottom line, so we see 103, 100, 1001 general fund, the, the total is $451,000. Now, that's not what we asked for, right? If you go down to the expenses, that's the 506, there is a surplus deficit that goes against it in the amounts of $54,000. That's the overpayment by the town.
And the state will reimburse that for this, this whole year?
Correct, correct.
For the revenue?
Yes, they're giving that money back to us, which lies back in the budget.
Okay.
So it considered like what we just amended for the 20,000. We already have another $40,000, $54,000 that's being bought back by the state because the tax rate should have been $144,44. $144.44, and they billed us $154,44.
Excellent, thanks so much.
Any other discussion on Article Ten? Okay, I would entertain a motion to... Recede.
So moved.
There's a motion to recess. Seconded by Carolyn, seconded by Kathy Yonkin. So we're going to recess for lunch. It is now 12:50. We'll say we'll reconvene at 1:30. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, all those in favor of recessing for lunch, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
No, I don't.
Okay. Dollar for paper plate downstairs. Thank you.
The first thing I want to tell you is I am glad that I stayed this one for last so that I could stay longer and be with you folks. I have done nothing but sit in meetings since the 8th of January when the session began. And this is the best meeting I have been to. No, this is not the beginning of a joke. There are, there are vast areas of this planet where people are not convinced that citizens can govern themselves. And there are places all over the world, most of the world, have never had the opportunity to experience what you guys are doing. Town meeting in Vermont is exceedingly rare. You are, the citizens are the rep, you are, there's no rep. You're the legislative body, and most people never get to do this, and you do it very well. I know sometimes it's messy, and sometimes it's long, and sometimes it's intense, but it is extraordinarily valuable. It is something that most of the world does not have. Good job.
Thank you.
I would vote for all of you for the legislation. The big issues you, you probably already know, in my bill here, education considerations, housing crisis shortage, whatever you want to call it, healthcare costs, these are the big things on the table. There is usually one big deal on the legislative floor in each session. There are three this year, and we'll probably be there, we're told we might be there in the June to sort these things out and to get them right and to try and find resolutions. I get asked frequently what my position is on these things. And I make, this makes me weird as a politician these days. I'll decide my position on the bill after I've seen the data and the reports, talked to the constituents, and actually read the language of the bill, and then I'll know if I'm going to vote on it or not. There are priorities, and yeah, there are some principles that guide my approach to it. But I'm not going to make my mind up solidly and say, I'm going to vote this way until I see exactly how that plays out. That's kind of the opposite of what the norm is today. That's part of the problem gotten broadly. I get a lot of inquiries about national politics. I'm sorry, the president has not consulted me really, so I'm generally as surprised as you are. The committee that I am presently serving on is the general in housing, which means anything that doesn't belong in any other category, the miscellaneous, that lands on our desk, and the housing issue in particular, housing affordability. And when we talk about affordability for housing in Vermont today, we're talking about the fact that people who work and have jobs and families and earn a median wage cannot afford to buy house, living life. It takes about 130% of what the median is before you can really actually buy a home in Vermont. And if you're looking for an apartment, good luck. So that particular problem is the one that my committee is addressing, to find responsible ways to provide more housing, expand our tax base, and spread the cost out a little bit more. This is where families with kids can afford to stay in Vermont, can afford to come to Vermont. This is school, it's, it's school budgets, it's the students in the schools, it's the workforce. And honestly, if you tried to find somebody to fix your back step in the last couple of years, you know what it's going to be like trying to find somebody to build 30,000 housing units? That's going to be a challenge, and we're working on it. But it is, that committee is very highly mentioned. Legislature as a whole this year is, is a fascinating mix. It's a great room full of people to get a read on. What I see so far is a lot of dialogue and a lot of people on both sides of the aisle who are really looking for solutions for the same issues. And they're bunched, and they're all attached. And when you find a solution here, you find out all that might cause poor problems over there. So go back to the drawing board. I have got, I've left a stack of business cards on the table. If you go down in the rear door, what's that, north? By that door down there, there are some business cards. If you want to get in touch with the inquiries to do so, use the email on that card. I have, like I said, I don't see as much. That one I will see. And if you don't get a response in 24 hours, send it again, because there are about 200 emails a day when we're in session. Do whatever you got to get my attention. And that's where I'm likely to get a response. There's a phone number there, too. Phone's off during sessions, but I will eventually get that. For, to get deep into issues and questions and things, I am going to be at the Chester County Hall at 6 o'clock on Friday, and we can spend as much time as we want talking about things. I'm going to provide a Zoom link, so, because I'm, I know you're just dying to go to another meeting this week. But if you'd rather do that from home, hear more about the issues, share your thoughts, we'll make sure that we give a Zoom link to everybody out there and you can join out. That is, that's my speech. If you want, do you want me to take questions now? Or do you want to? Okay, I will be around. That's the email on Friday. This is the week I'm home. We're not in session, so burning issues, get on me this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Charlton. And I'd also like to take, take this moment to thank the people who set up the food for lunch. Cindy, Kehoe, Jenny Riley, Cecilia Dietrich, and Carolyn Rubin, and anybody else who helped out. And thank you very much. I know Wyndham has a famous lunch for town meeting, and deservedly so. So thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on with order of business. We're back in the town meeting. So Article Seven. Article Seven, shall the voters authorize $390,823 for the general fund, of which $294,823 shall be raised by taxes, and $96,000 should be applied from other FY2025 budget revenues, voted 2024, $342,107 with $284,252 from taxes, and $57,855 from fiscal year 2023 budget surplus. Need a motion to bring that article to the floor? I see a motion from Carolyn. I need a second. Vance. Okay. Article Seven, shall voters authorize $390,823 for the general fund, of which $294,823 shall be raised by taxes, and $96,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues, voted 2024, $342,107 with $284,252 from taxes, and $57,855 from fiscal year 2023 budget surplus. Discussion, Carolyn?
No, I would defer to the slide board to pull us in as to why they had appropriated this amount.
Okay, Michael?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to amend the article to account for the $32,000 that we are looking to spend potentially to the healthcare. So it should be, according to my map max, shall the voters authorize $422,823 for the general fund, of which $326,823 shall be raised by taxes, and $96,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend Article Seven to account for the early article, earlier articles, Article Five and Article Six, that were voted on to, for health insurance for the town clerk and the town treasurer respectively, which adds $32,000. So the amendment is, shall voters authorize $422,823 for the general fund, of which $326,823 should be raised by taxes, and $96,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues. Need a second to bring that motion to the floor?
I'll second it and consider it a firm amendment.
Okay, there's a second for the amendment. So any discussion on that amendment? Okay, we're going to vote on that amendment now, all right? So the amendment is to change Article Seven. Not voting on the article, we're voting on the amendment. So the amendment is to change the language to read, shall voters authorize $422,823 for the general fund, of which $326,823 shall be raised by taxes, and $96,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. The amendment passed. Now we're in the amended article discussion portion. Do we want to, is there any discussion on the article as amended? See no discussion. We're going to bring Article Seven to a vote. Article Seven, as amended. Shall the voters authorize $422,823 for the general fund, of which $326,823 shall be raised by taxes, $96,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article Seven passes as amended. Article Eight. Shall the voters authorize road budget expenditures of $584,821, of which $494,821 shall be raised by taxes, and $90,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues, voted 2024, $537,286 with $521,953 from taxes, and $15,333 from fiscal year 2023 budget surplus? Need a motion from the floor?
Question?
Well, we need a motion to bring it to the floor first, Well, need a motion to bring it to the floor first and then we can have a question. You want to move the question out?
Yeah, I mean.
Do you want to move the question so we can discuss it? Okay. So moved, okay. Need a second. Second, Carolyn. All right, so Article 8, shall voters authorize roads budget expenditures of $584,821, of which $494,821 shall be raised by taxes and $90,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues. Discussion, Al.
Yeah, my question is, what is the, okay. What are the budget revenues where it says budget surplus? Oh, I need more explanation please.
So the difference between revenue versus surplus, is that the question?
Yeah, understanding where those amounts come from.
Okay. So the surplus is money that we already have in the bank and the revenues will be revenue that is generated this year. So the idea is to use the money that we know is coming in. Therefore, we don't have to raise revenues from taxes.
Michael.
Yes, Auntie?
Sorry about that. Michael, could you tell me where this revenue is coming from? Is that from the state or?
So yeah, it could come from a variety of different places. So in the, well, let's see if I can find it in the. Yeah, so for instance, you have a state aid for transportation in the roads budget. That's considered as a revenue. And you can utilize that money as it comes in the door instead of generating revenue from taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on Article 8? Seeing no discussion, we'll bring Article 8 to a vote. Article 8, shall voters authorize roads budget expenditures of $584,821, of which $494,821 should be raised by taxes and $90,000 should be applied from other fiscal year 2025 budget revenues. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 8 passes as written. Article 9. Shall voters appropriate $165,000 for the new road machinery fund, of which $65,000 should be raised by taxes and $100,000 will be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus voted in 2024, $180,703 with $72,000 from taxes and $108,703 from fiscal year 2023 budget surplus. Need a motion to bring it from the floor.
Motion to bring it.
Okay, there's a motion from Mr. Persson. Need a second on that motion. Seconded by Carolyn. All right, Article 9, shall voters appropriate $165,000 for the new road machinery fund, of which $65,000 shall be raised by taxes and $100,000 will be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Discussion, Mr. Persson.
Yes, is that equipment needed this year? And if so, is that equipment needed this year? Or is this just another bunch of money to put into an account to be ripped off later or misappropriated at a future date?
Okay, so somebody from the select board want to field that question?
So the short answer to that is we're not necessarily looking to buy something tomorrow. The long answer to that is that we have, I don't have the exact figures in front of me right now, but we have about a million dollars to spend over the next five years, five to eight years. If you include a new grader at some point, we're going to need a new backhoe, a new loader, and new trucks at some point. So at some point, we need to start putting money aside.
I would suggest that we expense those when the time arises and stop putting money in that can be either ripped off. Don't say it hasn't happened. Other towns have had people steal money from their towns or it gets misappropriated by the town or the state. Should not have a slush fund. That should be a target to be ripped off.
Kathy, do you have a comment?
Don't we have a truck on order? And we'll be taking delivery of that in 2025.
Yeah, we do have, we do have a truck on order. We also have that money in the fund currently. And the current balance of the fund will effectively disappear. So we need to start setting money aside. It is possible to get a loan for it, but I think it's reasonable to say that we want to at least have part of that money set aside so that we're not giving them for the entire package.
One more question, Michael, on my end. We earn a lot of interest, so we're the best where we are now to the tune of, I think this year was $40,000 total in interest. And so it seems to me it's much more prudent to put money away and earn good interest on it as opposed to borrowing money and paying higher interest on it.
Okay, Mr. Persson.
I think you're failing to apply. I think you're failing to apply inflation as in that money that we have saved is continuously becoming less valuable. So $100,000 that you collect today for a vehicle, next year, that same vehicle will cost $150,000. So therefore, your interest is not keeping up with the future cost of the said product.
I have no way of saying I'm going to catch. Nice catch.
Any other discussion on Article 9?
I'm good.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Yeah, I'll just speak to the fact that we're not really running this fund with a huge excess of money. I mean, Rashard is with us here today and he'll attest to the fact that this equipment, a lot of it is getting old and we do need to rotate it out pretty quickly. And like Mike said, once we get the truck that's on order now, there really is not anything left in that account. So it's not really sitting there with no purpose in a slush fund to get ripped off. We have a plan for it and we do know what AC has spent and when.
Okay.
So we're not currently paying for any truck or vehicle right now.
We've paid for them.
We've paid for them and when the new one is delivered, it's worth $150,000. Or does that have any additional cost?
We have a budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand who we vote for a budget. Are we automatically assuming we're voting for a budget surplus? Because it seems from one side to the other, from fiscal year to the other, we're drawing down from a budget surplus.
So the short answer is no. The goal is to not have any surplus. The goal is to, and you've seen that as we start using the revenues prior to building surplus. So if we can capture the money as it comes into the door, we don't effectively have to tax the population right us. So the idea is to move away from in time, away from using surplus or even having a surplus. The idea would be to end up with a zero balance. That surplus had money put into the, an emergency reserve and effectively we'd have an entirely balanced budget. That's the goal. I would love to tell you today that we have this much X surplus, but we haven't had an official audit yet. So that magic number is questionable. I can tell you that my napkin math comes out with a guess of maybe $750,000. But we don't know that because we haven't had an official audit. So until we have an official audit, we won't have an exact figure to work from. Once we have that exact figure, then my guess is that we would take some of that known quantity of that surplus and move it into some of the funds that we know we're going to need money for, for instance, the emergency reserve, and then return it like we are currently in the articles, return it back to the taxpayers in terms of offsetting or as offsetting.
I see a hand in the back there. Russell?
I would think we can view this as an equipment reserve fund. It's not really a surplus. It's a reserve for replacing the equipment. And rather than having to budge it up in one year, we do it over a series of years with installment payments. And it makes better sense to locate it as a reserve fund.
Yeah, this is definitely setting money aside for future purposes. I don't actually have the exact figures, but the way I broke it down was effectively, if we put $165,000 in, we will be able to fund our vehicles. Once we get past the grader, that's going to be a giant purchase. But once we get past that, we should be able to effectively statically raise somewhere between like $150,000 each year set aside. We will know we'll have exactly the right amount to cover our future purposes, future purchases.
Okay, yes?
I have a comment. It's probably not exactly germane, but since we're talking about the roads and Rashard is here, I'd like to take a moment and thank Rashard all the great work.
Is it Rashard or Richard? I always meet. Sorry, that was a little. Okay, any other discussion on Article 9? Auntie, I saw your hand.
Yeah. Thank you. I just want to say I find it much more prudent to put money aside over the course of the year rather than waiting until something breaks and costs hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I have been attending quite a number of select board meetings and I want to really applaud all three selectmen for their knowledge, for their willingness to research, for Rashard's input with all of this. I mean, this town is really in great hands right now. And I definitely don't think, and I speak for the treasurer too, that there's any misappropriation going on in this town by any stretch of the imagination. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article 9? Seeing no other discussion, we'll move Article 9 to a vote. Article 9, shall voters appropriate $165,000 for the new road machinery fund, of which $65,000 should be raised by taxes and $100,000 will be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 9 passes as written. Article 10. Shall voters appropriate $50,000 for repaving and $10,000 for bridges and large structures, of which $60,000 shall be raised by taxes. Voted 2024, $50,000 for repaving and $10,000 for bridges and large structures. Need a motion to bring it to the floor. Kathy, so moved. I need a second. Carolyn? All right, Article 10, shall voters appropriate $50,000 for repaving and $10,000 for bridges and large structures, of which $60,000 shall be raised by taxes. Discussion, Kathy? Any discussion? Yeah, you brought the motion, so you have the right to speak, Chris.
Our roads are the best and we need to keep them funded and we need to keep them constantly.
Okay, all right. In case anybody didn't hear, Kathy said that our roads are the best and we need to vote to keep the roads the way they have been kept up. To summarize, okay. Any other discussion on Article 10? Seeing no other discussion, we'll move Article 10 to a vote. Article 10, shall voters appropriate $50,000 for repaving and $10,000 for bridges and large structures, of which $60,000 shall be raised by taxes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 10 passes as written. Article 11. Shall voters appropriate $17,500 for the town garage maintenance and improvement fund, of which $17,500 shall be raised from taxes. Voted in 2024, $10,000 for a motion from the floor. Kathy, so moved. I need a second. Cecilia. So Article 11, shall voters appropriate $17,500 for the town garage maintenance and improvement fund, of which $17,500 shall be raised from taxes. Kathy, discussion on that? Okay, any discussion on Article 11? Seeing no discussion, we'll move Article 11 to a vote. Article 11, shall voters appropriate $17,500 for the town garage maintenance and improvement fund, of which $17,500 shall be raised from taxes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 11 passes as written. Article 12. Shall voters appropriate $10,000 for the town office maintenance improvement and improvement fund, of which $10,000 should be approved from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Voted in 2024, $10,000. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor. Kathy Scott, so moved.
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Persson. Article 12, shall voters appropriate $10,000 for the town office maintenance and improvement fund, of which $10,000 should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Discussion, Kathy?
No.
Okay, any discussion on Article 12?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
You know, the town office is sort of shared by different groups. I mean, who, who is responsible for, you know, administering the maintenance and improvement? I don't think exactly. Presume it doesn't cover new equipment or does it? I'm just curious. I'm just, you know, what, what is the funding? Who administers it? Who's responsible for the budget?
I can give you examples of how we've used it in the past. We've used it to fix a heating system and also the insulated crawl space underneath the building. It's been sort of a labyrinth between the town clerk and the select board as far as when things are done and what money's spent. You know, we've brought in all Kehoe and Sparky several times to replace light switches and change out lights and fixtures when necessary. It's all money that come out of this fund. And right now, it's relatively close to the real balance, correct? Because we did all this work in the last year or so, so.
Okay, any other discussion on Article 12? Seeing no other discussion, we'll bring Article 12 to a vote. Article 12, shall voters appropriate $10,000 for the town office maintenance and improvement fund, of which $10,000 should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 12 passes as written. Article 13. Shall voters appropriate $10,000 for the meeting house maintenance and improvement fund, of which $10,000 should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Voted in 2024, $10,000. Need a motion to break it from the floor. Beth? Need a second? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Second, Mr. Persson, okay. Article 13. Shall voters appropriate $10,000 for the meeting house maintenance and improvement fund, of which $10,000 should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Discussion, Beth?
My was just a comment. We were fortunate to be able to use. Duh, duh. We were fortunate to be able to use the meeting house recently for a family occasion. And it was fantastic. And I highly recommend the space to anybody else looking to gather friends and family. Everything's here, so it was awesome.
All right, any other discussion on Article 13? Yes, Cindy?
So this is a question about the last article and this article. So if this is approved, will there be $20,000 in the fund? Or does that mean that?
$10,000 for each individual.
You're taking $10,000 from the surplus and you're voting for $10,000. So that there will be $20,000 in this fund?
Correct, so there's two separate, two separate funds. One's the town office and one's the meeting house.
Right, but it's still the $10,000. So the town office will have $20,000 in it?
Town office will have $10,000.
Right.
And meeting house will have $10,000.
So there's nothing necessarily appropriated that is taken from the budget. What we're using is approving to take it from the surplus.
Correct.
Yeah, it does not change the tax rate.
So it's not going to be expensed to the taxpayers, it's just approving to take it from the surplus.
Right.
Any other discussion on Article Thirteen?
I've got one comment.
Yeah, I would just like to mention that this is only a drop in the bucket as far as maintenance for this uh, facility here. And uh, we got a lot of work done by uh, the meeting house committee and Kathy. Uh, just name some of the parties and securing a couple of large grants to really uh, turn this place around and deal with the feeling pain of the address issues that we uh, currently have here, so thank you to those parties.
Okay, any other discussion on Article Thirteen? Okay, seeing no other discussion, we'll bring Article Thirteen to a vote. Article Thirteen, show the voters appropriate ten thousand dollars for the meeting house maintenance and improvement fund, of which ten thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it? The ayes do have it, Article Thirteen passes as written. Article Fourteen, show the voters appropriate three thousand dollars for a future townwide reappraisal of properties, of which three thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Voted in 2024, ten thousand dollars. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor? Kathy Scott, so moved, need a second. Carolyn, Archrich. Article Fourteen, show the voters appropriate three thousand dollars for a future townwide reappraisal of properties, of which three thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Discussion, Kathy? Any discussion on Article Fourteen? Carolyn?
I do have a question related to this reappraisal. How was?
Um, how was it that our um, our CLA, and maybe nobody knows the answer to this question. I'll, I'll start with that. But how is it our CLA went from a hundred and nine point five six percent in FY twenty-five and a hundred and forty point nine five in twenty-six? I mean, this is, you know, this is crazy.
Is Russ here?
Russ? Russ?
The CLA is a good, good year average from the previous three years and reflective of the fact that we had a reappraisal and the reappraisal numbers were a lot higher. So when you're going back and adjusting them, the CLA goes up, which is actually good for us because that divides into the tax rate and lowers it. If the CLA goes down, then the tax rate goes up.
And I understand that, Russ, but I just don't, what I don't understand because there's an upper limit. We had to reappraise because our tax rate, our CLA fell below, I think it was eighty-five percent. And then you have to reappraise again if you go above a certain number. So I'm glad that it's high because our tax rate goes down. But I just don't understand how it fluctuated by uh, like thirty, thirty percent in, in one year. That's, that's crazy.
It's a three-year average, running average for the calculation of the CLA. Not just one year, but they have a three-year average over three years. We add the three years of CLA together and divide it by three. Because of our reappraisal, the CLA went up and it's effectively lowering our tax rate.
No, and I understand that, but uh, our, our CLAs from uh, previous years, twenty-four and twenty-three, were way low because, and so I, I don't see how you could possibly uh, add those three numbers up and divide by three and get a hundred and forty percent. And I, I, I think I'll just find out from the state. I'll call the state and maybe I'll be talking to you, Tom. But it just doesn't make sense.
You can ask Antia to talk to Cydally, the tax department.
Yeah, I know, I can also call. You can also call them.
Okay, Cecilia?
Yeah, could you just tell us what is the CLA?
So CLA is the common level of appraisal. And it's based on what the values of all of the real properties in the town are. And that fluctuates from year to year based on what the, the values of the properties are assessed at by the town compared to what the market value of those properties is. So it's a very complex formula, but it, it, it's directly tied to our tax rate.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article Fourteen? Okay, seeing no other discussion, Article Fourteen, we'll bring Article Fourteen to a vote. Article Fourteen, show the voters appropriate three thousand dollars for a future townwide reappraisal of properties, of which three thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it? The ayes do have it, Article Fourteen passes as written. Article Fifteen, show the voters appropriate thirty-two thousand dollars for one year's operational and other associated, associated costs of the Wyndham Schoolhouse to be used in the event that the town purchases the Wyndham Schoolhouse and associated property, of which thirty-two thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor? Kathy Scott, I need a second on that? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Harry Nitri.
Harry Nitri. So Article Fifteen, show the voters appropriate thirty-two thousand dollars for one year's operational and other associated costs of the Wyndham Schoolhouse to be used in the event that the town purchases the Wyndham Schoolhouse and associated property, of which thirty-two thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Discussion on Article Fifteen, Kathy? Okay, yes, Archie?
I'm just, I know I've asked this before and I hate to repeat myself, but I'm still trying to figure out how we get to thirty-two thousand. Is it when the building was being used and you came up with these numbers for oil and electricity? Or is that number from an empty building? And the last conversation at a select board meeting was that it could be as low as twenty thousand. Well, that's like the twelve thousand dollar difference. So I'm just wondering where we're getting the thirty-two thousand still.
So we looked at the funding, possible funding for that building. We basically utilized the only information that we had available, which were the old town reports. Um, currently, if you go to page fifty-four, you can actually see what was budgeted, how much they've used and how much they spent in fiscal year twenty-four. If you look at fiscal year twenty-four, it was thirty-seven thousand and change. I can't see the number, thirty-seven, zero, four, one, I think. If you look at fiscal year twenty-five, you've got twenty-one thousand. So that's mostly unused building with the heat basically turned off. And a building in twenty-four, which was used part of the year, was thirty-seven. So what I did was, I didn't have the twenty-five numbers, I had the twenty-four and twenty-three numbers. So I looked at where the twenty-four and twenty-three numbers and I took off the employee, which was a cleaner, and um, I got around thirty-two thousand. One could argue that because we aren't going to be taking over the building tomorrow, for instance, we may not need thirty-two thousand dollars. That being said, we don't know what the costs are going to be. We can make guesses. We do know for a fact that we are not part of the system, like they have a um, internet system that we are not part of, we're not part of that group, so our internet's going to look different. So internet telephone, we have no idea what it's going to cost for, so it'll probably be different. We're not part of their um, group where they get the electricity paid, so our electrical bill is going to look different as well. That being said, uh, personally, like I said, I like to plan ahead. I think thirty-two thousand dollars is ballpark. If we have extra at the end of the year, it would come up as a surplus in our budget next year. And when we end up with a surplus, we can figure out where that goes and how it's going to look. I think next year we'll have a much better understanding of what that looks like. It won't be perfect because we won't have acquired the building for an entire year, but we will have a much better understanding of what our physical costs are going to be.
Okay, any other discussion, okay?
Uh, my question was if the thirty-two thousand is actually enough? Because there's discussion about asbestos, there's also, I'm, I'm, not that this is a popular opinion, but I, but there's, there's worth being used for now, which is not very much, the heat is turned off, et cetera, et cetera. But if I see if this becomes a building that we utilize, there's a whole slew of stuff that we're going to have to fund. So I guess I just wondered where the, if you had comment on that?
So I think that's where we come into the needs assessment and the planning for the building. Ultimately, you can't open the door tomorrow and say, we're going to do a bunch of programming. We don't even know what we're going to use it for. Once we get through some of that planning, we'll have an understanding what kinds of modifications we may or may not need to do for the building. For instance, the septic system was designed for forty people. I could be wrong, but somewhere around forty, forty-four people, cathesis. So if we're going to use it for a banquet hall, I don't see that as necessarily what we're going to use it for. But let's say we turn it into a banquet hall. Clearly, the septic system for forty-four people is not going to be sufficient. And part of that planning process would be, A, what is, what is the driver that we're going to, what are we going to do with the building? What is it going to cost to do any modifications, if any? And then where are we going to get that money? And that could come through uh, taxes, it could come through grants. And there's a whole scope of uh, funding opportunities for us, depending on how we might want to use that building. So the goal, at least with this, is to make sure that we have enough money to keep the heat on and the lights on, to make sure the building doesn't fall apart in the short term. And then in the long term, once we have directions for the building, we'll figure out what we need to do and how.
Any other discussion on Article Fifteen? Yes?
I feel like this is an opportunity to uh, misappropriate and embezzle money in this endeavor of uh, operating this, this fund. We're just, thirty-two thousand has disappeared and it seems like it's a wide open fund here. As, as much as you need, it's not taxed, it's just dip into the general fund of the town to fund this building. That's a complete uselessness to us at this point.
Anybody care, Kathy?
I'd like to respond to that. We have a team of auditors who will make sure that that money is not embezzled or scammed. And honestly, they are good at their job, they're dedicated to their job, and they will make sure that whatever monies we vote, will be taken care of.
But it's not voted, it's just, it's not taxed, it's just taking it out of the general fund.
That doesn't mean it's not accounted for on non-dominant.
Court, I just, yeah, I just want to add something real quick there about the auditors. I have to give them a shout out and show that we can, Cindy from Nemrick, who has, who's still in all our support and training in the accounting system that's being installed, has a lot of experience with different towns and how they operate. And she had nothing but glowing comments to make about the team of auditors. So not that this addresses all your concerns if you think we're stealing money, but.
I'm not accusing Wyndham of doing it, I'm just saying the opportunity is there.
Well, I appreciate that, but it's not happening. And we have a great team of auditors who are, get blown views by people who are familiar and aware of what goes on in other towns and they safeguard the money and how we spend it, so.
Yes, thank you.
So when do you anticipate that we take over the building? And if we don't take over the building until June first, then it's only six months out of the fiscal, out of our calendar year that we have expenses for that building?
Oh, I don't think we have a plan that, in terms of when we're going to acquire it, when and if we're going to acquire the building. The select board and the school board will have to get together and effectively negotiate what the purchase is going to look like, who, for instance, is going to pay for closing costs? Is there any remediation that this town wants done prior to taking ownership of the building and so forth? So I, we have no idea effectively when we might take over the building. But I do know, I believe it's June first. The school board effectively has no more funding available for that building. So one could assume that it is prior to June first. But we'll kind of see, I mean, depends on. What's that?
The thirty-two thousand is for a whole year's budget for twelve months.
The thirty-two thousand dollars is using the surplus funds that we already have, so we're not taxing anybody anything extra. It is uh, an assumption based on what we've seen historically of the building being in some semblance of use, of what it takes to operate the building for a year. That being said, you'll notice in the article, um, we can use it also for other things. For instance, uh, if we take the ownership on, I don't know, we take the ownership of the building and the sink explodes and we need to put a new sink, clearly we're going to need to fund that. So I think one could make the assumption that because we're going to purchase it at some uh, times less than a year, thirty-two thousand dollars is more than we need to just keep the lights on. But it gives us a little bit of wiggle room to take care of any issues that might pop up. For instance, the sink or the toilet or whatever, just to keep it functional in the short term.
One second, there you go, I saw your hand.
And just to speak to that, um, yes, negotiation is still be underway with Bob Fisher, the school board's attorney as well, there's more, a lot more discussion to be had. Uh, but just to be clear, the um, the heat has not been off. Um, so the building is still being heated. It isn't um, you know, set at like eighty degrees or anything, but it is set to, you know, we don't want pipes freezing or any damage to come to the building, so. With less occupants in the building and not being used as much as when a school was operating in it, yes, that's less, but just wanted to make it clear that the heat's not even off, so, thank you.
Beth?
Can you call the question?
Beth's making a motion to call the question and discussion. Requires a second, second from Antia. So there's a motion to call the question that requires a two-thirds majority. It's an end discussion on the article, so we're going to vote on calling the question first, okay? So all those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion on Article Fifteen, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, the question has been called, alright, no more discussion. Article Fifteen, show the voters appropriate thirty-two thousand dollars for one year's operational and other associated costs of the Wyndham Schoolhouse to be used in the event that the town purchases the Wyndham Schoolhouse and associated property, of which thirty-two thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it? The ayes do have it, Article Fifteen passes as written. Article Sixteen, show the voters appropriate eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars for the following nonprofit organizations, as recommended by the Wyndham Social Services Committee, to be distributed as indicated, of which eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. The Collaborative Three Fifty, Grace Cottage Family Health and Hospital seven hundred, Greenup Vermont Fifty, Healthcare and Rehab Services two forty-eight, Neighbor's Pantry, Leonardary Food Shelf three fifty, Mountain Valley Medical Clinic seven fifty, and Neighborhood Connections twenty-five hundred, Senior Solutions two fifty, SEFCO, Southeast Vermont Community Action three twenty-five, Townsend Community Food Shelf three fifty, Vermont Fire Protection one hundred, Vermont Food Bank three hundred, Visiting Nurse Vermont and New Hampshire eight sixty, West Drivver Community Project two fifty, Wyndham County Humane Society three hundred, and Wyndham Women's Freedom Center four hundred and fifty, voted in 2024, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. I need somebody to bring a motion.
Motion discussed.
Okay, motion's bringing it onto the floor, seconded by Carolyn, okay? Article Sixteen, show the voters appropriate eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars for the following nonprofit organizations, as recommended by the Wyndham Social Services Committee, to be distributed as indicated, of which eight thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Anton, you have the right to discuss first.
Yes, I believe that uh, mandating that people give to charity should not be done here. If you want to give to it, knock yourself out. I don't think we should mandate everybody, all the taxpayers to do so. I don't think we should mandate everybody, all the taxpayers to do so.
Okay. Any other discussion on Article sixteen? Kathy?
I would like to propose that all of the services on here, again, with the exception of the Brattleboro Development Corporation, but all the other that they were speaking of.
I'm sorry, with the exception of what?
The Brattleboro Development Corporation. I would like to see all the other services increased by at least a hundred dollars.
Okay, so. All right, there's an amendment that's being proposed by Kathy Scott to increase everything by a hundred dollars.
Except the last one.
The last one is not, the Women's Freedom Center, you wanna exclude that one?
You're looking at seventeen, Article.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna see, all of them.
Okay, all right, so I was just counting, I think it's seventeen, is that right?
Yeah.
Sixteen, so that would increase that to ninety-seven thirty-three?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so there's been an amendment being proposed by Kathy to increase the amount on line one to nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and to increase each of the individual organizations by a hundred dollars. Okay, everybody understands that? Don't need me to read through the sixteen organizations?
No.
Okay, so that amendment needs to be seconded and we need to vote on that. Uh, David Cherry, uh, seconded. Right, now we're gonna vote on that, ready to discussion on that amendment before we vote on that. All right, see, no discussion, we're gonna vote on the amendment to increase the amount on line one to nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. So all those in favor of the amendment to the article, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, the article has been amended. I did have a request from Pat McLean and Pat Cherry to speak about the Neighborhood Connections, so if, there shouldn't be any objection, but if there is, if there's no objection, Pat McLean and Pat Cherry would like to speak on the Neighborhood Connections.
All right, well, we're here representing the executive director of Neighborhood Connections, Tom Simmons. Both Pat Cherry and I are on the board of Neighborhood Connections. So first of all, we wanted to thank the town for considering and supporting Neighborhood Connections. It's an organization that's been around for fifteen years, serving all of the mountain towns in southern Vermont, including Wyndham. And some of the services that are provided include comprehensive case management, benefit application assistance, community meals, health and wellness, and a big regional transportation system, the Mountain Town Connector, which has doubled their services in the last year to more than two thousand five hundred rides per year. And the majority of these are for seniors to go to medical appointments and for essential services. It's really an important service for our area. And the organization has also worked very hard with families and businesses that were impacted by the recent floods. A number of Wyndham residents are actively involved in the program. Becky Phillips organizes the community meals, and we have about ten people here that regularly volunteer for those community meals. That's one someone, Becky's excellent. Hal Nelson is one of the longtime faithful Meals on Wheels drivers who is here today.
What? Anyone a quote in the service?
Well, the services in Wyndham, for such a small town, we actually have, you know, people using the social work offerings and getting help there. We wanna encourage people that you have in your families, friends, anyone, to use a social worker. We have nine households that have met over the last year. Eleven individuals participated in the community meals, and they're regulars, they come every month. Meals on Wheels, you know, we have seniors that can't get out, and so they're homebound, so we have seniors at home that have received a thousand Meals on Wheels over the year. And ten individuals were given thirty-eight rides to medical appointments, so they're free. So that, that ban is available to people for free, to go as far as our hitchcock. So if you know a folks or your family members are in a situation where they need a ride, they just have to call a day in advance. Two days is better if you have an appointment. And we also offer deliveries of prescription medications. Right now, it's been from the pharmacy in Northshire in Manchester, which I hear may not continue its service. And five households have had an agreement to receive their medications delivered to their door up till now, so.
Since we, since Monday here, we lost our pharmacy.
So we're responding to the needs of the community. And we just wanted to say thank you again for your support.
Things like the community meal and other community, they're not need-based, right? Anybody can participate?
Anybody, yeah, you're welcome to come, everyone is welcome.
Right, at Neighborhood Connections, the one which is in the strip mall, and it's just around the corner, across from the post office. Around the corner from London, which is in Markham. And there's a space there for, I'd say, forty or fifty people to have a meal. And then by the way, not only can folks come and eat and enjoy social, you know, times and it's a busy push for preventing isolation in the elderly, but it's not all elderly. They can sit and eat a meal, they can take an additional meal or to the home.
And there's also to-go meals.
And the to-go meals are if people don't have the time or transportation to come and eat. That's wonderful.
Or if you can, this is.
There you go.
That's the second to stand for my.
Good, awesome.
Yes, Kathy?
I wanna say that it is a wonderful service, it is so fabulous. And it's, we are a wonderful family. We have a parent who's been hunting up a girl on the hardest radiation. And it's wonderful that Ben came and picked him up and took him up there. And, you know, the drive is hour twenty minutes and the treatment is eight minutes. And he waited for him, but I think even if the treatment hadn't been a long time, they would have waited and brought him home. And it just took all of the tension and the stress out of losing that car for a day. So thank you, and it's, you know, this probably isn't even enough to give to you all, but it's really, really, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article sixteen? Cord, did you have anything? Oh, I see, okay. Okay, see, so I have a question on Article sixteen for the select board. Since we increased the amount by amendment to sixteen, by sixteen hundred dollars, does that sixteen hundred dollars come out of the budget surplus, or will sixteen hundred dollars?
It can stay in the surplus.
It can stay in the surplus, okay. Okay, so Article sixteen will bring Article sixteen to a vote. Article sixteen, show the voters appropriate nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars for the following nonprofit organizations, as recommended by the Wyndham Social Services Committee, to be distributed as indicated, of which nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article sixteen passes as amended. And that concludes two-thirds of the meeting, so we still have another page left. Article seventeen, show the voters appropriate one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars for the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation in recognition of their assistance to the town of Wyndham, of which one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus, voted in 2024, seven hundred and fifty dollars paid from the social services budget. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor. Kathy fails, seconded by Carolyn Partridge. Article seventeen, show the voters appropriate one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars for the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation in recognition of their assistance to the town of Wyndham, of which one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Discussion, Kathy?
I know this may seem a lot if you're not familiar with the EDCC, but they have really helped us out with planning issues ever since I've been along with the town. They are incredibly responsive, they are able to look up information, they are able to... Their executive director met with Cord and other people about the line issues, and they are available for us whenever they need them. They are like the VLCT in their resources and in their help. And so I urge you to vote yes on this. Their assistance is like having a planning person on our staff, which of course we don't have, so.
Okay, any other discussion on Article seventeen? Barbara Jean? Okay, one second, Phil, I'll recognize you in just a moment, Barbara Jean?
Just real quick, just to clarify, last year, we, as Social Service Committee, did not approve this. It was, it says it came out, seven fifty paid from the Social Services budget. That's only because the select board chose to put it in there. I just didn't want there to be any confusion that we paid it last year and we didn't this year. We didn't approve it last year and we didn't approve it this year, and that's why it's a separate article. That's just for clarification.
Phil?
Well, the question simply is, probably thirteen hundred and forty-seven dollars. Every, you know, every donation dollars was pretty much around numbers, and I was kinda curious, where did thirteen forty-seven come from?
Those there, those there asked, yep.
It's based on so much for person, for population.
All right.
Okay, any other discussion on Article seventeen? Seeing no other discussion, we'll move Article seventeen to a vote. Article seventeen, show the voters appropriate one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars for the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation in recognition of their assistance to the town of Wyndham, of which one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article seven passes as written. What did I say? Did I say seven? I meant seventeen. It's been a long day. Article eighteen, show the voters appropriate five hundred dollars for the Wyndham Historical Society, of which five hundred dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor. Kathy Youngerman, need a second. Abby Pilton. Article eighteen, show the voters appropriate five hundred dollars for the Wyndham Historical Society, of which five hundred dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. Discussion, Kathy? No discussion. Any discussion on Article eighteen? Abby?
I just wanna say that the Historical Society has been doing amazing work. It is so wonderful to see such a large gathering of community members coming together. Sue, you've done a really great job, and everyone that's really stepped up. Jenny, Uto, you know, there's a lot of folks that have been getting that going, and I very much support the five hundred dollars for this one, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on Article eighteen? Al?
Is the five hundred dollars what the Historical Society has requested?
Yes.
Yes, is the answer. Okay, any other discussion on Article eighteen? Okay, seeing no other discussion, we'll bring Article eighteen to a vote. Article eighteen, show the voters appropriate five hundred dollars for the Wyndham Historical Society, of which five hundred dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article eighteen passes as written. Okay. Article nineteen, show the voters appropriate ten thousand dollars for a professional audit of Wyndham financial accounts, of which ten thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus funds. Voted in 2024, sixteen thousand dollars from fiscal year 2023 budget surplus funds. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor. Pat, so move. Okay, and Becky Phillips seconds. Article nineteen, show the voters appropriate ten thousand dollars for a professional audit of Wyndham financial accounts, of which ten thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus funds. Discussion on Article nineteen, Pat?
Yeah, it is really important that we get an audit, and it seems that our idea of how much we would need was wrong. We're gonna need at least this much, plus the money we had set aside last year for the cash flow audit. And these are supposed to be done every three to four years, so I think it's in line that we proceed and get one, start with hopefully soon.
Okay. Yes, George?
Yeah, I also wanna stress the importance of this to make sure no one's stealing and embezzling money. This has been pointing out a possibility here. Is that number in the offer, should we amend that to, say, fifteen thousand dollars? Kathy, you have information on that? I might want to be opposed to throw in some more money, I just make sure.
I would, I would suggest that we move the article and give the dog fund to the audit.
Let's add five thousand dollars and deal with Article twenty separately. I'd love to add five thousand dollars, I'm gonna make it fifteen thousand.
Okay, there's a motion to change the amount in Article nineteen from ten thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars, and it's been seconded by Pat McLean. So we're gonna vote on the amendment to the article. And then my question stands, is that ten thousand dollars from budget surplus funds? Or would that, would that second number have to change?
If we close the dog fund, we'll, that'll effectively go into surplus funds, therefore we should be able to fund it without being terrified.
Okay.
We will know a lot more once the audit is completed.
Okay. All right, so. So for the point of clarification, we'll leave the, we'll amend it to fifteen thousand dollars for both, both numbers. So the amendment is, show the voters appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for a professional audit of Wyndham financial accounts, of which fifteen thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year 2024 budget surplus funds. Okay, we're gonna vote on the amendment first, we're not voting on the article. So all those in favor of the amendment to change to fifteen thousand dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article nineteen has been amended. So any discussion on Article nineteen as amended? Bill?
Does anybody know how much an audit actually costs? Or are we just guessing? It's the first question, and secondly, when would the audits occur? How often do they occur, when would the next one be?
Does anybody have an answer to that question? Becky?
My guesstimate is probably, I guess, I think it'll be almost maybe thirty thousand dollars. But we had four thousand dollars in the account from a prior year. But if you give us a little flexibility, that would be good. I've been in contact with two outside audit firms, and we were waiting for today to find out if we were gonna get more money. So then we will bring a proposal to the select board and they'll make a decision on which firm to use.
Okay. Beth, I saw your hand.
No, I felt like that wasn't nearly enough, so yes, the question was answered there.
Okay.
I'm just, just point of clarification, so that means if we pass this article, that there's basically thirty-one thousand dollars that have been earmarked for a, an audit this year, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on Article nineteen as amended? Kathy?
Phil, I think thirteen years ago was our last audit? So our last audit was approximately thirteen years ago? So it's time.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on Article nineteen as amended? Kathy?
I just would remind, we tried very hard last year.
Kathy?
Oh, we tried very hard last year to get the audit of twenty-three done in twenty-four. We're gonna be, you know, as they know, gotta book these guys early. And we didn't, we didn't do it well enough when I was doing it in the treasury. So if we're gonna be doing audits every three to five years or whatever, we have to have money set aside so that we can book an audit quickly after accounting in the years we won't have it done.
Okay, any other discussion on Article nineteen as amended? Seeing no other discussion, we'll move Article nineteen to a vote. Article nineteen as amended reads, show the voters appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for a professional audit of Wyndham financial accounts, of which fifteen thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget surplus funds. All those in favor of Article nineteen as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article nineteen passes as amended. Article twenty. Show the voters close the dog fund and transfer the balance of four thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five general fund. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor. Alan? So moved, second Cindy Keough. Okay, Article twenty. Show the voters close the dog fund and transfer the balance of four thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five general fund. Discussion, Alan?
Well, as far as I know, no one has ever figured out what the dog fund is supposed to fund. I would just like say, we have, we bring in money. There's a fee that goes to the town, which is low. And then there's another fee, which is even larger, that goes to the state. And it's, I think for this year, it's like five dollars a dog tag stays in the town. The only expense we have is buying the dog tags. We have already the numerous costs for their program. We bought the program and that's all covered in our annual fee, as far as I understand it, Kathy. So I, I think it's a good idea to do away with a fund that we really don't use.
Okay. I like it. Okay, Michael?
To the villagers' work of our auditors, they were able to ascertain that the proper balance of that fund is five thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty, twenty cents, rather. So I would like to amend the article to read five thousand two hundred sixty-eight and twenty cents instead of the four thousand eight hundred eighty-seven and twenty.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the article to change the dollar amount in Article twenty from four thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents to five thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents to accurately reflect what is actually in the account. That amendment needs to be seconded to be brought onto the floor. I'll recognize Abby as the second. So now we're gonna vote on the amendment to the article. Okay? Amendment to Article twenty. Show the voters close the dog fund and transfer the balance of five thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five general fund. Voting on the amendment, not on the article. All those in favor of amending the article, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article twenty, as amended, any discussion? Kathy?
I would like to see it further amended articles. So the dog money that comes in that we get to keep after we pay the state and buy the supply goes into the audit fund automatically.
Okay, so because that was not warned in the language of the article, we can't change it on the front of the floor, but I would encourage you in Article twenty-four to have an advisory opinion to tell the select board what to do with.
Oh, I know.
Okay. Any other discussion on Article twenty as amended? Okay, seeing no other discussion, we will vote on Article twenty as amended. Show the voters close the dog fund and transfer the balance of five thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five general fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article twenty passes as amended. Article twenty-one. Show the voters create an emergency communications fund for a radio system for use in emergency situations. Need a motion to bring that onto the floor. Abby, seconded by Pat. Article twenty-one. Show the voters create an emergency communications fund for a radio system for use in emergency situations. Discussion, Abby?
That's silly. I, I feel as far as our page knows in, in emergency planning, that this is a step in the right direction to make sure, you know, we've been through some disasters already in, oh.
So being planned for, or planning for the ability to communicate in unpredicted circumstances, I think is incredibly important. I don't believe that this would end up being a lot of money, but something to get started and start that fund is incredible. Thank you.
Okay. Al?
Shouldn't there be a dollar amount attached to this Article twenty-one?
So I think it's bifurcated. So Article twenty-one is to create the fund and Article twenty-two is to fund the fund. Okay. Any other discussion, Michael?
So realistically, you have no idea, well, I should say that. Realistically, we need basically to receive money to think about what works best for our town. That's where you see Article twenty-two. But in order to do that, we need to create a fund to do that. If you look at the most recent large disasters in our country, to include what happened down south in the Carolinas and in California with the wildfires, one of the most surprising things is that the things that we take for granted, communications, were compromised. And down south, they lost all, like a lot, if not all of their cell phone towers. They lost electricity. They lost effectively everything. And down south, the thing that saved them were people who are into what we call ham radio. That was the thing that started the communication. And actually, there were people who were utilizing ham radios to communicate with outside resources, to include the federal government, who were coming in to try to figure out how to put things back together. And in time, the federal government put up alternative systems to help supplement, to get rid of those challenges. But in the short term, they, if they didn't have ham radio, they would have had nothing. So I'm not saying we have to have a giant ham radio network up here in the middle of nowhere. But from my perspective, I think it's important to think about ways that we can improve our situation if the cell towers are broken, because they do. At my house in West Wyndham, whenever the power goes out, our cell phones go out. I can't tell you why. I can, there must be a cell tower that's the one that we get apparently that is somehow connected to grid. And they're supposed to have backup power, at least that's my understanding. But for some reason, it doesn't happen in West Wyndham. I don't know. But I am certain that if we were to look at our town as a collective, based on the way our mountains are shaped, we might find similar issues. And this really is sort of the tip of the iceberg. What this, the seed money in Article twenty-two will do, will give us the ability to explore where we might put an antenna or two, to figure out how to expand our capabilities so that we can get word to Rashard, or word to Cord, or whoever's on the select board. So we can start the process of figuring out where the roads are broken, where we need to respond to, can emergency responders get to somebody's house, those kind of pieces. So it's the beginning of maybe a longer-term project. I'm not saying that we're gonna spend thousands and thousands of dollars, but this sort of gives us the ability to sort of explore and figure out what happens to make sure that we're protected when our two main roads wash out, there's no power, and cell phones. Thanks.
Tan?
I don't wanna get too geeky, but I am one of the two amateur radio people in town. There's a nationwide system called RACIS that's to be used in the event of an emergency. In the event of an emergency, you can use the radio willy-nilly, who really cares? But it's more, as much about practice and everything else as anything else. I cannot reach my amateur radio group from my house in, on a dungeon. I have to drive up here to the meeting house once a week to do the practice sessions. And those radios are not necessarily cheap. It's been proposed to use something called GMRS, which is recently expensive. It's all line of sight. And what we wanna do is to put an antenna somewhere up high, sort of as high as we can get, and run a bunch of experiments. I'm gonna donate my repeater for the experiment. But I don't wanna donate my antenna because it's permanently mounted. So that's basically, we're gonna try to get an antenna up high, run some geographical tests. And that's what the plan is. And the plan after that is fuzzy, but we need to have some facts before we go ahead and try to propose something.
Okay, any other discussion on Article twenty-one? Seeing no other discussion, bring Article twenty-one to a vote. Show the voters create an emergency communications fund for a radio system for use in emergency situations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article twenty-one passes as written. Article twenty-two. Show the voters appropriate two thousand dollars for the emergency communications fund, of which two thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget surplus. Need a motion to bring it onto the floor. Abby brings it on the floor, Tan seconds. Article twenty-two. Show the voters appropriate two thousand dollars for the emergency communications fund, of which two thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget surplus. Discussion, Abby? Okay, any discussion on Article twenty-two? Yes, Alan?
I'm just wondering if two thousand dollars is enough to get started with this? Or should we consider making, having someone else make a motion to be considered?
Tan?
There's maybe more money spent if this works out. But if, basically, the purpose of this, of these funds are to get an antenna to put somewhere, because like I said, I don't wanna donate mine, I wanna keep mine, and put it up someplace high. And for example, if we put it up in this, in the Seapole somewhere near, we might have to run power up the Seapole, because the last time I walked up there, there's no power. So those are the kinds of expenses we're talking about, they're not terribly major. If we're gonna go put up a repeater, which is the long-term hope that if the coverage is good, or repeaters, which just makes life complicated, and put something in, in here, and maybe there's a base station, that's gonna escalate. But at this point, the cheapest approach that I see is put an antenna up somewhere. Hopefully, we get good coverage. Buy a repeater, I could name prices, but I don't really know where it's gonna go, et cetera. So as experimentation and exploration, I think two thousand is adequate. And I, I can only speculate on what the cost would be, but, you know, there's like a five to ten thousand dollar. Put a repeater up, make sure it's solid, if you want it to work all the time. It's got a solar, you can imagine it escalates a bit. If it's in a building with a generator, if there's a generator here, that would work out. If you can put it up somewhere high up in the mountain, for someone who has a generator. So there's lots of possibilities. Probably be on the spoke of this conversation now. If it doesn't work, why are we having the conversation? So that's why I think the two thousand dollars is a decent swag.
If it works, then we need to move forward.
That would be the next step, yeah.
Yes, Alan. Now, what can we do next year, though?
Yes, yeah, this is, this is, so we actually run the experiment, well, I'm talking about it. Because Jim and I have been talking about this for a couple of years now and haven't actually run the experiment.
I think the two thousand dollars will give us the ability to do the experimental and some planning, figure out what the ultimate goal really looks like. And if once that's established, a plan can be developed. And let's say we wanted to put a repeater somewhere, that was gonna be that magic ten thousand dollars. Then we would say, okay, well, clearly, we're not gonna put it all this year. Maybe we spread it out over a number of years and we build the fund to match the drop, you know, the plan. But we don't really, we can't really plan for what it could cost until we know what it really still looked like.
And if it's viable.
Yeah, if it's viable.
Okay, any other discussion on Article twenty-two? Oh, Maureen.
I just wanna say, having just voted to create the fund, I think we need to fund it. So I think this is a really great idea.
Okay, any other discussion on Article twenty-two? Seeing no other discussion, we'll bring Article twenty-two to a vote. Show the voters appropriate two thousand dollars for the emergency communications fund, of which two thousand dollars should be applied from fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget surplus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, Article twenty-two passes as written. Article twenty-three. Show the town of Wyndham, Vermont, advise the select board to develop and publicize a plan and methods for inventorying all public and private culverts in the town of Wyndham, Vermont, and to maintain a publicly available and searchable database, updated whenever a culvert is repaired or replaced. Data collected for the inventory database should be compatible with that assembled by the Wyndham Regional Commission, but should contain data specific to town needs. Need a motion to bring that onto the floor? Okay, saw Tan's hand first and the second. Pat, McLean. Article twenty-three. Show the town of Wyndham, Vermont, advise the select board to develop and publicize a plan and methods for inventorying all public and private culverts in the town of Wyndham, Vermont, and to maintain a publicly available and searchable database, updated whenever a culvert is repaired or replaced. Data collected for the inventory database should be compatible with that assembled by the Wyndham Regional Commission, but should contain data specific to town needs. Discussion, Tan?
I can't speak for Frank, but I've had some conversations with him.
Yes?
Oh, sorry. I can't speak for Frank, but I've had some conversations with him. Basically, my understanding is without some sort of database of where all the culverts are, we're not gonna know who's been updating them and how, 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 how many we have. I know some of the, know a little bit about where culverts have to be for driveways, et cetera, and they're, and what the laws are, but, Cord, can you speak to this better?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great idea. Having information like this is gonna do nothing but help us in all, all which for sure. We have state mandated requirements to manage our culverts in the ditches along the roadside with what's called a road erosion inventory. I've talked about this at a number of select board meetings. And we have a grant with, to hire the Wyndham Regional Commission to update our road erosion inventory, which includes culverts, road culvert or driveway culverts. For that, I know they're in the right of way or in high, high-risk segments of the road. So that's scheduled to be started in the spring. The Wyndham Regional Commission representative, he's agreed to help us with some of the less priority, lower priority culverts, like what they were considered to be medium or low priority, with some of which would be driveway culverts. Frank has volunteered to start gathering data of the rest of the driveway culverts. We haven't gotten any, you know, final details on that yet, but certainly it would be interesting to know every culvert in town, including driveway culverts. There's hundreds of them. So I think the, it'll be interesting to see what the extent of this is in particular when we start considering driveway culverts. Rashard and I have talked about this over the years, a hundred times, in terms of responsibility for driveway culverts. And any new culverts that are installed in town require an access permit, and there are specific, V-trains established specifications for the installation of those culverts. So right now, if somebody wants to have new access to the property, they have to provide, or they have to apply for a permit and follow the specifications for installing them. So things that are installed, driveway culverts that are installed new will be done up to a V-train specification. But there are a lot of driveway culverts in town that don't meet those criteria. And the challenge will be, once we figure out what all those are, which ones are, need work and replacement, it's gonna be who's gonna pay for that. and replace them, it's going to be who's going to pay for that. So, and who's going to do the work? So up until now, Rashard's been focused on road erosion inventory in the high priority segments, and that's what we try and get great money for, and those are statutory requirements that we have to, we have to focus on to start with, so.
Yes, Pat?
Yeah, I think this is a really great idea, because we're all, you know, facing more problems with storms and water. There was an article in the publication called Seven Days on Town Meeting Day Articles by Regional Hellman, and this article was cited in that paper. And Jeff Nugent, who Cor just mentioned, the senior planner for Wyndham Regional Commission, applauds this effort. Says that towns that maintain a database online relying on volunteers can enjoy financial benefit when they obtain grants, and probably have a better opportunity to get grants. And this gentleman, Jeff Nugent, encourages towns to inventory private culverts, too, because private culverts can actually cause big problems that impact the nearby public infrastructure. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I think this is a great article.
Thank you. Abby?
Thank you. And kind of going off of what Cor has said, I would like to see an amendment, even though as mentioned, private culverts, more maybe specifically private culverts with the right of way on town roads. I'm not sure how culverts that have no bearing on our town roads, I kind of feel like that could be an invasion of, you know, property or its privacy of what's on their property. But I think that the message could still go through, and the database is, all of that's great, but I'm concerned for, for private landowners being forced to, you know, disclose culverts, and how that would impact them with needing to have a repair if it's not something that impacts others. So, thank you.
Okay. Hold on one second, Maureen. So are you making a motion to amend the article to say, instead of private culverts, to say private culverts that interface with the town right, town rights of way?
Correct.
All right, so there's a motion for an amendment. That, that motion needs to be seconded, and then we need to vote on that. So is there a second for that motion? A MAC votes, gives a second on that. So then we're going to vote on the amendment to the article. We can discuss it in just a second, okay? So the amendment is going to change the language in the second line. So it shows the amendment, the article read, "Shall the town of Wyndham, Vermont advise the select board to develop and publicize a plan and methods for inventorying all public and private culverts which interface with town rights of way." Does that sound good? Are in the town right of way.
How about effects? That was pretty much, how about effects down the way?
So, I think that's, uh...
That's the same sentence now, so?
Same.
Which are in the town right of way. Okay.
You know, we can't, we can't deal with private culverts that are not in the town right of way, which is the roadway itself plus about 12 and a half feet on either side of the road. So we're responsible for, or we have access and legal ability to go do things within the right of way, but we can't go out of the right of way and deal with private culverts in the neighborhood.
But if the culvert dumps into a town road, that's...
Not if it's not in the right of way.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay. So that amendment has been...
Yeah, I'll just...
Yeah, so now we're going to discuss the amendment. Yes, Cindy?
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering how Abby expressed it, and what Cor was just saying is, the town, the town does not have any rights or whatever to a private culvert, but if it's within the right of way, so what's the right of way? A certain amount from the middle of the road?
Depends on the, depends on the town road, but it's about 12 feet from most of the town.
Okay, so like, our driveway would have a culvert almost before you go on to the town road. So that might be included in that private culvert?
Your driveway, your driveway culvert was actually placed as part of the road erosion inventory repairs that were paid for.
Approved.
Is this wrong?
Yeah.
They were approved and paid for by the state with a grant, because that, that zone line ditch comes down, have it reveal a road there, goes under through your culvert there. Your culvert wasn't big enough, so they approved replacing it as part of the road erosion inventory work that was done.
Well, our driveway, it doesn't really matter, but I'm not sure if the amendment is necessary. I'm just confused about what...
I guess they're trying to clarify the word private here. We do have to be careful about, I think the intention was to say, you know, the private dri, I think they're referring to driveway culverts when they say private, thinking that it, private word private covers all private driveway culverts, but we do get in this case where if it's there, if we start talking about trying to deal with culverts that are not within the right of way. So, you know, we can word it out from the mic. I think I understand the point. Jeff Nugent is going to be working for this in the spring. Whether we want to amend this or not, I think, I understand the point of this. So we can do whatever you guys want.
Mike?
From my perspective, I guess importantly, keep the amendment, although I think it's also important for us to recognize that this is an advisory vote, and therefore it is advising the select board what the will of the people is, but it's not a border, and therefore the select board, if it chose to, could say, we are not going to set up foot on private property and only work within our town right of way. Where this might come up is, or something to think about, where this might come up is, we think about like Timber Side, I believe that that, those roads are not town roads, and therefore the question would be, do we do them, and are they part of the inventory, or are they not? If they are not part of the town right of way, then technically I don't believe we as a town have the right to be on property and evaluating the roads. I don't know what the intent of the article was, if that was part of the intent or not.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mike. You did, you did the nail right on the head. However, I'm taking a different viewpoint on it. I think it's important, first of all, the article is just for inventorying these culverts, right? It's not for replacing or doing any work to them. I read the intent right. But I think it's important to know what culverts are up on single range or any other private road, because they do affect ultimately a town. So I, I think it's important to include the, the private road culverts. Just my two cents.
One second. Carolyn?
So I, I, I think this is probably a very good idea, however, whatever form it takes, but since it's referenced here, and I used to be a commissioner on the Wyndham Regional Commission for many, many years, I didn't notice any article paying the dues that we typically pay to Wyndham Regional. So is that something that gets done in another way?
It should be in the budget.
Is it oversight?
It was one.
Yeah, it should be in the budget somewhere.
What's that?
It should be in the general fund somewhere.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay, I saw another hand. Kathy?
I'd like to echo what Maureen said. Yeah, I'd like to echo what Maureen said, because I understand Abby's concern, but on the other hand, if you're really looking at the town and neighborhoods, you know, someone's private culvert could be damaging to other owners' properties, and I know we're not at that point yet, but having an inventory of all culverts would probably, especially the way, if you look at the history, just since I've lived here, of how much money we have spent as a town, gotten grants for. Culverts are literally something important in the town of Wyndham, so why not do a full inventory? That doesn't mean you have to make anybody do something, but at least we'd really have a robust inventory.
Okay. So any other discussion on the amendment of the article? Oh, sorry.
So mainly questions for clarification. When somebody puts a culvert in their property, is a building permit required?
Probably not. The driveway culvert, I don't...
Yeah, but I'm wondering, it's like, you know, you're adding a structure on a piece of property.
If you're, if you're in a stream, you have to get a stream alteration permit, so that is a good deal. But whether you're talking about, again, where the line is from the, from A and R in terms of when you have to get a permit, let's consider the big enough streams to go to A and R and get a stream engineer out and get him to design it for you.
Well, I was just asking from the standpoint, I sort of along Kathy's comments there, that it seems like, yeah, you really do want to know the whole big picture, because what happens if somebody, in a hypothetical situation, puts a culvert somewhere on their property that wasn't properly sized, fails, blows out, and then affects our roads? Because ultimately, the culverts are just transferring water, and the water is going to go somewhere, and it's either going to go where it was designed, or if the culvert fails, then it goes somewhere else. And so who's liable at that point if they have a private culvert that, you know, they didn't maintain or something, and we get...
Yeah, I can really, I can show you.
I can tell you, larger, you know, streams that come to A and R, and there's a stream engineer that you have to get involved and with to get a permit and, and design, I think. If you're talking about, you know, a ditch of some sort on somebody's property, I've never heard of a kind of a permit that you need to have, but I don't know, I just know I'd have to look into that.
I think what he was asking is, it's putting an access permit. You're required to put in the correct culvert. And that's something we need required.
You know, there's a whole specification there for what size.
Sure, yeah. And I, I know, we have, that's our domain here. I'm just talking about, you know, hypothetical, somebody's got a road trail or whatever they put in their property, well in their property, and, you know, was it designed properly or not? Does it fail? You know, if it does, because it fails, it very likely is going to go to somebody else's property or to a road.
I have to ask that question, I don't know. I know I have experience with larger culvert specs. Like I said, A and R is involved in, and there's a year that you have to size it and so forth. When you're talking about smaller culverts, it's...
Dan, hear you!
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. The, I, my point was, I don't know the answer to that. If you're talking about smaller culverts on somebody's private property where they're trying to cross some kind of a ditch, and there's water that runs through that seasonally or something, I'd have to ask the question of who's, who oversees that. Right now, the town doesn't, like you know, David, with the culvert that we put in over on Wheeler, there's lots of people that get involved in, you know, streaming culverts and streams when the town needs to do some work on those. But when you're talking about smaller culverts that somebody might put in on their own private property, I don't really know.
Excellent. I'm going to recognize Dave first.
Time to move to the call of question.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion to call a question, which ends all discussion. It's been seconded. Okay, so we're voting on amending the article, not voting on the article itself. All right, so the vote is on the amendment, the proposed amendment to Article 23, which will make the article read, "Shall the town of Wyndham, Vermont advise the select board to develop and publicize a plan and methods for inventorying all public and private culverts which are in the town rights of way in the town of Wyndham, Vermont," et cetera. So we're voting on that amendment, not on the article itself, okay? Everybody understands requires majority vote. All those in favor of amending the Article 23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 23 has been amended. Okay, any discussion on Article 23 as amended? Kathy?
I, I just, I have to stop the statement. Hold on, sorry. Yes. Um, since this is an article to advise the select board to develop and publicize a plan, it seems to me we're worrying too much about the minutia, because I, what's going to happen is they're going to have to come up with a plan, and then we're going to have to have it vetted by various parties, including Bob Fisher, to make sure the language is correct, make sure we're not violating anything that we shouldn't, make sure the state's happy. I think we're worrying too much over the minutia right now.
Okay. Any other discussion on Article 23 as amended? Seeing no other discussion, we'll bring Article 23 as amended to a vote. Article 23. Shall the town of Wyndham, Vermont advise the select board to develop and publicize a plan and methods for inventorying all public and private culverts which are within the town rights of way in the town of Wyndham, Vermont, and to maintain a publicly available and searchable database updated whenever a culvert is repaired or replaced? Data collected for the inventory database should be compatible with that assembled by the Wyndham Regional Commission, but should contain data specific to town needs. All those in favor of Article 23 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Article 23, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 23 as amended has passed. Brings us to Article 24, to transact any other non-binding business that may legally come before this meeting. Kathy, did you want to bring anything up? Does anybody have anything they want to say? Yes.
Most of the close.
Okay. Before I recognize that, Mr. Scott did ask to have a comment, so.
Hello, hello, you all have noticed, I didn't say very much of this meeting at all, and I just want to look around, or want to say as I look around the room. Maureen's over there as part of the meeting house committee. Michael's here as an excellent moderator. We've got lots of other, Barb Jean's here, geez, Susan Persa, we've got Bill Dungle back there hiding behind Kathy. Kathy is our, is our treasurer, or ex-treasurer, or whatever you call. We've got a whole slew of the auditors. Got Tom here, Eileen, David Cherry, I mean, we've got all kinds of town participants here. And I just want to express my appreciation to all of you, because I think we really have a great team, and I hope you guys appreciate how wonderful all these people have involved. Oh, we've got some JPs here, I see, I'm looking it out. So it's, Kathy fails, don't let me forget her, she's, you know, gotten all kinds of grants and information on grant scores as a grant strategist, so, school world members, so really, I hope everybody recognizes and appreciates what a nice team we have. And when I look up here on, to my left, I'm, excuse me, but I'm big at delegating, and that's why I didn't say much of this meeting. George and Michael have really stepped up to the plate, and Michael in particular, I got to give the kudos to, because he killed himself working on his budget, as you can tell. He got into it, and really knows what he's talking about, did a great job for everybody. So I just, again, want to reach out to you all and say thank you, and ask you to leave the town and express appreciation, too.
Okay, so there is a motion to adjourn. That needs a second. Kathy Youngman seconded. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting until next year, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good evening.